All right, we are going to get started. We'll start with an invocation from Pastor Landon Witsit of Westminster Presbyterian Church, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilwoman Barbara Young. Please stand.
Let us pray. God of all nations and people, we thank you for this day. Those of us called to serve you through Jesus Christ know that your desire for the world is grace and peace and love and justice, and we are humbled to be a part of that work. Just as you have called some to be prophets and apostles, evangelists and teachers, you also call some to be public servants, and we thank you for giving these friends of ours ample amounts of energy, intelligence, imagination, and love. Keep their minds and their hearts clear to pursue what is good and true. We thank you for their work, and we pray that you make yourself known to all people in this city. May we continue to join together and make this a place that all can thrive. All this, we pray in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order. We'll begin with item three, Office of the Mayor, and then we will start with a resolution of commendation, and I will make my way down to make that presentation. There we go. Carrie McBride, we are so excited to honor you this morning as our employee of the month. We'd like to learn a little bit more about you, so I'm going to ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Carrie McBride has been a city employee for 14 years and is an administrative coordinator in the Development Services Department, and whereas Carrie McBride provides support services to residents, employees, supervisors, and division heads, and whereas Carrie McBride also serves as a backup to the Nuisance Abatement Section Administrative Specialist while being a Heart of the City Coordinator, and whereas Carrie McBride has taken on additional responsibilities and maintained her enthusiastic and helpful attitude, and whereas Carrie McBride brings calmness to a sometimes chaotic environment that exudes confidence and competence to residents, employees, and supervisors, and whereas Carrie McBride is a dependable and competent team member who is always willing to help, and whereas the council desires to recognize Carrie McBride for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Carrie McBride, August 2021, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Well, thank you for that. You know, my takeaway from this, Carrie, is you bring calm, you abate nuisances, and you have a heart. These are all very good and useful things. So thank you so much for your service to the City of Oklahoma City. Why don't we pass this? How does that sound? Take a motion, and somebody can maybe vote for me, I guess? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes when you are able. And I vote aye. Councilman Cooper votes aye. Really getting drug out, I don't know. People, ah, it passes unanimously. All right. Well, let's hear it for Carrie real quick. Carrie, would you like to share a few words?
Well, I'm very honored to be recognized. I'm really proud to work for this city and under great leadership and amazing colleagues that are just as deserving of that more of this than I am, and I was really, really thankful.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much, Carrie, for your service to the people of Oklahoma City. You and the 4,800 city employees that we have are so amazing and the best city employees in the country. Let's hear it one more time for Carrie and our whole staff. All right, remaining on the Office of the Mayor agenda is item 3B, a resolution approving travel expenses for me to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors Annual Meeting in Austin, Texas from August 31st to December 4th. This is the return of mayor and council travel. Don't think we've had an item on that in some time. I would put myself before you for a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously and with the six required votes. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to item four, items from council. 4A is an ordinance to be introduced today, set for public hearing on August 17th, final hearing on August 31st. This relates to the zoning and planning code and has the curious designation of mentioning quail, dove, p fowl, and ostriches. I look forward to hearing more about this. Councilwoman Nice.
Do you really want to hear more about this? I saw Miss Susan come close, so if you'll just help me with this, I'll just, I'll start by saying it was brought to my attention that we did not have these animals listed, and there have been some concerns in the community, and if you would like to know more, please see me after the meeting. But thank you.
Yes, this Susan Randall from the municipal council's office. This ordinance would amend the use unit animal raising personal in the zoning code, and it would expand the type of birds that would be regulated. Currently, the zoning code is limited on the type of birds that it regulates to domesticated chickens, turkeys, ducks, guinea fowl, and geese. So this amendment would just add the additional birds of quail, doves, p fowl, and ostriches. The amendment would also amend the nonconforming use provision to require all those that are not in compliance with the new ordinance to come into conformance within three months. I'd be happy to ask and answer any questions.
And this is important because, again, of the concerns that I've had from members of our community, and who knew that there are folks who have all of these other domesticated animals that are clearly a concern for their residents and their neighbors. So I'm hoping we can move this as quickly as we can to take care of our neighbors in the community.
All right. Well, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance for consideration? Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously, so that is introduced, and we'll be on a public hearing at our next meeting in two weeks. That concludes items from council. Now we move to item five, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. I've got several items that are on today. We only have one that has a presentation. I'm going to make a comment on one of the items, but I wanted to go ahead and invite Blaine Bolding from City County Health to come to the mic, and he's just going to give us an update on the vaccinations, just update. Blaine is the Chief of Public Health Protection for the City County Health Department. So Blaine, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Again, my name is Blaine Bolding, Chief of Public Health Protection and Incident Commander for the COVID Response for Oklahoma City, Oklahoma County. Let's see, get this. So to kind of give a quick overview, obviously, our highest surge in cases, you know, occurred in 2020, late winter, and then early winter of 2021. That's about the time vaccine rolled out, and we enacted our plans to get that vaccine out. And in Oklahoma County, we were the top county in the top 10 state of getting vaccine out to our residents for several months. And we hit the end of April, and some of that demand for that vaccine started waning, but we could see the case count sharply drop along with the vaccine as we got it out. Whoops, this goes fast. There we go. So kind of I'll give you an overview. Here in the state of Oklahoma, we've administered 1.9 million first and second doses of vaccine. Thirty-seven percent of that had been administered in Oklahoma County. And as you can see, in Oklahoma County, less than half, but 46% of eligible 12 and up have received or considered fully vaccinated, and more importantly, they're 82% of our 65 and up are fully vaccinated. Goodness. Okay. Just kind of a, here we go. Just kind of a look at the effectiveness of the vaccine. As you can see, there in the red, that's the case rate over the period of time, and that blue, that's the rate of vaccination. As you can see, we started rolling out vaccines that sharply dropped the cases. And as you can see, this is broken down in age groups, and as you can see, the bottom, 65 and plus is the most vaccinated group, and they also, with this latest surge of Delta variant, have the smallest surge in those cases. And so as you can see, those younger ages, which have been less vaccinated, that's where the sharper surge is right now. Just, this is just a point of where we kind of are right now, is the highest peak we were last summer in mid-July and November, just before we really started to surge, is kind of where we are right now in the current surge in the Delta variant. As you can see, ever since the vaccine started, we had what we called an epidemic suppression with the vaccine rollout. It reached this hesitancy, and half our population is not vaccinated, so allowed for this variant to be produced, and now we're starting to see our first surge since then, since the vaccine rollout. And just overlooking right now of how this surge started, we saw it coming several weeks ahead of July 4th, and we saw that it was coming from the east. Arkansas, Missouri hit Tulsa several weeks before us, and that July 4th holiday really kind of everybody getting together helped this latest surge. So the main thing now is really, with school's about to start too, and the surge that we have, and since 11 under can't get vaccinated, we are really trying to promote everybody else to get vaccinated to help protect those children. So I mean, the vaccine right now is our biggest, biggest friend, so.
Blaine, I certainly want to commend you and your team on the vaccination rollout and the continuing effort and the proactivity in trying to get it to where people are, especially as the interest wanes. So I mean, you guys are awesome. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you.
I have a few questions, actually. Sorry. I was curious, so what other, are there any other mitigation members that the County Health Department would want the public to know about that could help protect those folks who are not eligible to get vaccinated?
And we, I mean, we encourage all the mitigation efforts, and there are several tools. We know we've all, everybody knows about masking, social distancing, the things as important tools. Vaccine's the main one now. There we get vaccine, because the vaccine is the solution. That is what ends this pandemic, and that's really what we're trying to promote right now.
Can you talk a little bit more about how the development of a variant happens and whether, if there is a tipping point at which, I know there's been very, very small amount of breakthrough cases, like an infinitesimal like portion, but is there a point at which, I know I've been reading stories and have just been curious about understanding how the Delta variant came to be, and is there a point at which there's like a critical mass of some kind, a tipping point, that the vaccine doesn't become the solution, I suppose?
Well, well, right now, the vaccines are effective against this variant. Could there come a day where there's another variant that develops where we may have to come up with a new vaccine? That is possible. So, but the variants happen because there's enough folks in the population who obviously are unvaccinated or not, don't have the natural immunity, and then continues to mutate, and that's what happens. And the thing is, as you saw that sharp drop, just kind of go over that sharp drop, it was vaccine and natural immunity that helped that sharp drop in cases. Natural immunity is not, you don't have that with the Delta variant. Vaccine's the only effective solution to the variant, and that's why we have this latest surge.
And then can you also just talk a little bit more about that collective immunity idea of what it would mean to get to collective immunity in vaccines and how that would affect the Delta variant spreading?
I didn't hear the first question.
Sorry, the getting to like collective immunity. I know a lot of people call it herd immunity, but that makes me feel like a cow. So I've heard other scientists say it uses collective immunity as the phrase. Is, can you talk about what that percentage would be and what it, I know you all have been doing a really huge effort at getting vaccine out to folks, especially kind of those more access, folks with less access, difficulty access, you know, getting transportation, or folks that might be, need a little, to talk a little bit more with a health provider or something. Can you, what would it look like to get to collective immunity, and do we have projections of how far we might be away from that, based on how vaccine has been going?
Well, that's the, and that's kind of a moving target, because we don't know exactly, but kind of one of the numbers that was thrown out there is around 80% vaccinated.
Eighty percent.
And we're less than half, you know, less than 50% right now. But one of our main goals now, ever since the vaccine hesitancy, that we have been targeted now. We've been more targeted. You know, first it was mass immunizations. Now we're targeting populations that do, if they have transportation issues, or we're really partnering with schools, churches doing back-to-school supplies, and things like that. Those are the type of things we're doing. We've, you know, gone to public housing projects, whatever it is, folks that who might not be able to get to a pod, we're trying to go to them, and doing much smaller, we're chipping away at it, but we continue to chip away.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate all the work you all have done, and especially keeping us informed with those month, or monthly, weekly meetings, so that we can keep up to date. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can you speak about the difference, there's about a six percentage point difference between those individuals with both vaccinations and those who've just received one vaccination? Is that spread due to the 30-day waiting period, or do some people believe that just one vaccination is sufficient? Can you talk any about that difference?
Well, I mean, there's a, well, there's, I'm not quite sure I understand your question. Now, that one vaccine gives you some protection.
Yeah, well, so we see the original statistics. There's about a 48%
Oh.
of individuals who have received both vaccinations.
Okay. Well, some, some folks are still in that waiting period, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Others, also, they may have had, you know, you may had side effects of that first vaccine, and maybe they didn't want to go out for that second. There's all kinds of reasons, or maybe they haven't had the opportunity to.
So that's my question. Of that spread, that six percentage point spread, is it made up of those who've been most recently vaccinated and they're waiting on that 30-day window, or have some people just decided to only receive one vaccination? Can you distinguish that?
Well, we can't distinguish that, because you have to poll everybody, but we've seen that there's been a mix of both. We've seen some that have been hesitant to get that second dose, and six months later have gotten it, and things like that. So it's been, that's all over the board right there.
Can you explain to me how, as you said, that this is the way to end, the vaccine's the way to end this act? How is that the way to end it?
Well, we're, well, if you get enough people vaccinated, these variants won't continue to be developed to the extent they are in having these surges. And then it may get to the point, and we may, and there's still a lot to learn about this virus, it may end up being, like you've heard a lot of people say, like the flu, it may be just endemic. But if plenty of people are vaccinated and have that immunity to it, we'll never have those large surges anymore.
So the vaccine inoculates people from getting COVID? Is that what you're telling me?
For the most part, yes. What it does is it prevents the disease, for the most part, not 100%, but it, you know, the main thing, vaccines prevent the severe illness that you get from that and hospitalization, but also prevents a lot of the disease because you already have some immunity to that.
So if someone's had COVID and they've got the natural immunity, why would they need to take the vaccine shot?
What we've seen from the original variants, or the original variant and the other variants following, that the way this Delta variant has developed, it's bypassed that immunity. It's, the vaccines are still fairly, really, very effective against the Delta variant, but that natural immunity from the other variants is no longer, no longer helps you. So you basically lost that immunity with this variant being developed.
But the vaccine was based on the original variant?
It was based on, yeah, there's a, but it's a design of a protein design where they did it, and it's the way it was designed, what is recognized for your immune response is different than the natural immunity essentially. So, and so your body is still responding to the way that vaccine was developed.
But it's a synthetic protein that you've, that we're injecting into our bodies?
That is.
Not natural. So we didn't even take the COVID original vaccine, or protein?
Well, the mRNA is, yeah. MRNAs are a synthetic.
And what does that do with someone's mRNA whenever it combines?
When people.
The synthetic with the natural?
So RNA is what is the genetic makeup of a virus, and so.
Also part of our DNA.
Well, our DNA is different. RNA is the virus's DNA, because a virus is not a fully living thing. It's, you know, it's a, it needs a host, and so it's developed a little bit differently. So there's no effect, because ours is DNA, they're, you know, the virus's RNA, so there's no crossing the streams there. But, so it's just mimicking that, so it introduces it to your body, mimics that virus, that synthetic, so that your body recognizes that. So when it sees it again, that your immune system naturally responds to it, and that's kind of how that works.
Which would be the same way if you've already had it naturally?
That is correct, but it's in a different way, obviously, because we're showing that the vaccine is being effective to this latest variant, which the natural immunity is not holding up to the, to this latest variant.
So where's our death rate? Has it increased?
The death rate so far, we haven't shown it to increase yet. So it's, the Delta variant is so, the surge is so new, those deaths lag, and it may not change the death rate. The important thing is, is it infects a lot more people. So we talked about the infectious rate. So the original Wuhan had what we call an R naught of two to three. So it's like a common cold. You get it, you spread it, and average to two to three other people. And the Delta variant has a, what we call an R naught of eight to nine, like chickenpox. You catch it, you're more likely to spread to eight to nine people. So no matter what that death rate is, I mean, you have, you know, nearly three times as many people catching it, so there's going to be more people die, even if the death rate stays the same. If that makes sense.
No, I'm a little confused on that one.
Well, it's just more people will have it.
But we're, our death rate hasn't changed?
No.
But we're more worried about the cases versus the death rate. I'm confused as to why that matters when.
Well, the death rate matters because, okay, the original one, you say only two to three people got it, and 1% of those die. That's less than if eight or nine people catch it and 1% of those people die. And you look at that in mass numbers.
Can you also talk about the hospitalization rate? Because I think that's the thing that I've constantly come back to, is that, yes, the severeness of it that could kill someone is concerning, but the amount of people being hospitalized puts a pressure on our public health and health systems that, that is bad. Like, it is bad. Like, it means that less people can go to the ER for any other reasons, less people can get into an ICU bed for any other reasons. Can you, I'm not 100% sure I know where our hospitalization is, but I think I got an email about it this morning.
I did have this slide here, just in case somebody asked about that. Now, and that's one of the different things. We are seeing some children be hospitalized, hospitalized, which we didn't see as often with the original strain. But as you can see here, Tulsa for the past three weeks, and we saw, like I said, we saw this Delta variant coming down, essentially coming down the I-4 to 4 corridor from Missouri and Arkansas through Tulsa to here. In Tulsa, for past three weeks, have been tripled the hospitalizations we've been consistently for three weeks. So, you know, that could be a picture of what's happening here, but don't know for sure. So we are the most vaccinated county. That will help as well. But Tulsa is pretty similarly vaccinated as we are.
Thank you. So what, mostly some of the questions I had, people have asked, except local guidance, as I've been, I'm sure with the rest of the country, following what the CDC is saying in terms of our, you know, how we might reconsider wearing a mask inside of public spaces. And if I just saw an earlier statistic saying that we're about in the second week of the July 2020 moment, so just prior to when we did a mask ordinance previously, where, what kind of discussions would need to, what kind of numbers, hospitalization numbers, positivity rate, what metrics are we looking at that would then start causing us concern about the rate at which this is going to spread, particularly to the 12 and under demographic, before we're able to finalize the use of the vaccine for them? Like, that's my main concern, is spreading. When I hear you say the When I hear you say the Delta variant can get us to eight to nine people versus this other one that's two to three. So that's the first thing I hear. The next thing I hear are 12 and under children. I just can't stress that enough. Children, right? Who are not eligible for this vaccine right now. They are about to return to classrooms. I'm about to be a returning college professor in a classroom. And then I will be around children during the day, like outside of that. That makes me want to know what I need to be doing as a vaccinated adult to protect children right now. So what metrics are we at the city-county level kind of looking at that we might need to have some concern? Whether it's hospitalizations, positivity, because it was 5% last time, remember? We said 5% positivity rate. That was when we started, we wanted to get beneath that. So I'm, and I don't know the answers. I'm literally local guidance. What you got?
Well, the thing now is, is the Health Department, as far as that goes, now that we have a vaccine, that's what we're pushing.
The main thing.
Now, we are recommending what CDC recommends. That's what we're doing at our agency as far as the mitigation measures. But the vaccine, that's what we really want to get out because that is our, our final solution. That's the thing that's going to get this ended. And so, and that's why we're targeting schools as well, because we know that's huge. Looking forward to hopefully the 5 to 11 open up in Pfizer, which should happen, you know, hopefully late September, October. And, and they're working hard too for that full FDA approval for Pfizer as well. And that may happen by January before, which will, I think a lot of people, all of the hesitance folks are waiting for that as well to happen.
Is there anything, any of us as council members, I know I've, you know, we've been out, I've seen you at pot, these mass vaccination pot events. I went to Northwest Klassen, shot a video, it was at a second dose event. I'm to understand that when I've been following this conversation, that people at the local level, trusted figures at the local level are the most likely to persuade someone who's vaccine hesitant. Not necessarily an anti-vaccine person, but a vaccine hesitant for the reasons you might have mentioned, like transit access, for instance, or maybe I can't get off work because I'm working two, three jobs. I, I'm worried about the after effects for how many hours, right? I can't take off work for that. My understanding is that someone's primary care physician, or maybe on a body like this that is nonpartisan, we are a nonpartisan body, right? We might have different ideological dispositions, but we are a nonpartisan body. What could we be doing from this horseshoe as city leaders, as the, what could we be doing to help end this pandemic? I, I have concerns, but I want to help. What could, what, how can we be helpful here?
Well, and that's, and that's what we kind of turn to. We, as a public agency, have, you know, been heard throughout this whole pandemic. And so I don't know, we have been challenging folks who have been vaccinated too, and safely vaccinated, to let others know in their lives, personal connections, and explain to them, what's the benefits of vaccine, you know, being vaccinated? And that's the thing, we really want to get those personal relationships and encourage others who are on that edge to flip over to the side to get vaccinated so that we can, like I said, protect our, especially those 11 and under who can't get vaccinated and school's about to start.
That's right. Well, and I really appreciate that 80% goal too, thinking about the collective immunity. And I would just encourage, you know, I've heard Councilman Stone, for instance, last time we talked about encouraging vaccinations, like this would be an opportunity for us as council members to really think about. We have photos from when we got vaccinated or whatever it was to kind of remind people, like, they trust us. Our people trust us. We talk to them at their door. So, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Blaine. Really appreciate it. Appreciate the partnership with City County Health. You guys have been great guides for us and we really appreciate your leadership in our community.
Appreciate it, Mr. Green. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the only other item that I had, I was going to mention was, so we've got the hotel tax report that's on, the revenue enforcement report, the investment report, but also the sales tax report. We do have our July sales tax. It came in very strong, with about 20% growth. So still continuing the strong growth that is, is really surprising to me that it's continued like this. And so very strong growth there. We had strong growth in use tax. Use tax was slightly below target, but combined it's about $3 million over target for the start of the year off. So a really good start to the year. And that is all the items that I have.
Just real quick, where is hotel tax at this point?
I don't know where we are for July. I, I know.
I just mean like how is it going in comparison?
Oh, it's definitely improving. That we were at, I think we finished the year last year from this report. It's about 14% down, which is really kind of surprising with where we were originally. I saw Matt Boggs, our treasurer's here. Do you know where we are with July? Because the difference in sales tax and hotel tax is we actually collect the hotel tax. Sales tax, there's a lag when it's coming in, so we have that. I don't know where we are in the, in the July report yet. Do you know?
July collections are going to be similar to the, the end of June. And so I think we collect about 1.5 million. I don't know what projections were, but we're still finalizing that August.
Do you know what that is in comparison to percentage? Because we're going to start comparing to months that were down last year. So our comparison is going to be very.
I would be more interested in 2018.
Two years back, right.
Yes, but we, I don't have those on me, but I can definitely get those.
Okay, we'll get that information.
All right. Is that all I got?
That's all I have.
All right. Onto item six then, Journal of Council Proceedings. Items A and B can be taken with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item seven, Request for Uncontested Continuances. And the item that is listed, item 11I, is a typo. And we want to verbally amend that to state that that item will be continued to, no, September 14th, not the 4th. Anything else, Mr. Speaker?
That is correct. We do have other items that are on right now. If you go to page 15, not, item 11D, this is S P U D 1817. That'll be deferred two weeks to the 17th of August. And then item 11G, S P U D 1268. This is being deferred to the 31st of August. Moving to page 17, 11M1. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 1537 South Irving Street, the owner is secured. Item C, 1431 Milam Court, the owner is secured. Item D, 4200 North Pennsylvania Avenue, the owner is secured. Item E, 1432 Reading Drive, the owner is secured. Item G, 5512 Spitz Drive, the owner is secured. Item I, 5 South Western Avenue, the owner is secured. Item K, 21 Northwest 7th Street, the owner is secured. Item N, 6001 Northwest 8th Street, the owner is occupied, its owner occupied. Item O, 416 Northeast 16th Street, owner is secured. Item P, 3023 Northwest 19th Street, the owner is secured. Item S, 1808 Northwest 30th Street, the owner is secured. Item W, 2815 Northwest 44th Street, the owner is secured. Item X, 2205 Northwest 50th Street, the owner is secured. Item Y, 3290, or sorry, 3920 Northwest 51st Street, the owner is secured. On item, on page 17, item 11N1, abandoned buildings. All of these items are stricken from the agenda. Item A, 1537 South Irving Street, the owner is secured. Item B, 4200 North Pennsylvania Avenue, the owner is secured. Item C, 1432 Reading Drive, the owner is secured. Item D, 5512 Spitz Drive, the owner is secured. Item F, 21 Northwest 7th Street, the owner is secured. Item G, 6001 Northwest 8th Street, the owner is secured. Item I, 3023 Northwest 19th Street, the owner is secured. Item N, 2815 Northwest 44th Street, the owner is secured. Item O, 2205 Northwest 50th Street, the owner is secured. And item P, 3920 Northwest 51st Street, the owner is secured. That's all the items I have.
Okay.
Please ask about item 11B on page, on page 15. That's the one I am here today to represent.
Yeah, it's not deferred, so.
I beg your pardon, sir?
It's still on, still on the agenda. What we were just doing was just items that are deferred.
Sorry for my confusion.
Sure.
Okay, now we are back on item eight, revocable permits. And item 8A is a revocable permit with Hope is Alive for the Sobriety Sprint, August 28th, using Wheeler Park and other locations. And we do have someone here who signed up to speak on this item, Ari Patchen. Yeah, just come forward and tell us a little bit about your event.
Yes, so my name is Ari Patchen. I represent Hope is Alive as the Community Development Coordinator. So Hope is Alive exists as a place to radically change the lives of drug addicts, alcoholics, and those that love them. This will be our fifth annual Sobriety Sprint here in Oklahoma City. We'll have three others, one in Weatherford, one in Tulsa, and one in Wichita. All in the same day, same, same time. So the sprint came about as a way to honor anyone who has lost somebody to addiction. So the last mile of the 5K, we actually honor those loved ones by having pictures printed out and, and set up. And as the runners are finishing, you know, they get to see hundreds of faces. And so those families get to be represented. And all the sponsorship, all the registration fees, everything goes into our scholarship fund for anybody that's coming in that can't afford to, to enter into our program. So Hope is Alive provides sober living mentoring homes for anybody that's recovering from a long-term drug addiction, alcoholism. We also have weekly meetings, over 40 meetings across the country for loved ones who are struggling with somebody's addiction, so.
Yep. Councilman Stone, Councilwoman Hammond?
Well, it sounds like a, a great event and appreciate everything that you guys do in that area, so.
Thank you.
Certainly want to move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Councilwoman Hammond, did you want to say something? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8B is a revocable permit with the River Sport Foundation for the Oklahoma Paddle Sport Festival, August 19th through 24th, using the Eastern Basin and the Regatta Park Zone of the Oklahoma River. And Megan Duffy is here to speak on this item.
Good morning. My name's Megan Duffy. I'm the Events Manager down at River Sport. August 20th to 24th, 19th is setup day. We're going to be hosting the Oklahoma Paddle Sports Festival. That will easily be our largest event of the year this year. We've got four things kind of rolled into one. First of all, the International Canoe Federation is hosting their Sprint Cup Championship, along with a few other races, Extreme Slalom. So we're going to have some internationals coming straight from the Olympics to stay with us and race for that. That event will be internationally televised and it'll be the first time that it has been done under the lights at night. So that's kind of our trademark and we're excited to have those guys come out and have that opportunity. We're also going to be having the American Canoe Association's National Championships for Slalom, which is whitewater, and then sprint, which is flatwater. So they'll be out here throughout the entire weekend. And we also have a USO Experience Event. We're expecting a few thousand families, friends and families of our military service members coming out throughout the weekend for that festival side of things. So we're really excited to offer it. The main theme of the weekend is innovation and kind of progression. That's why we've got a few of those events with Extreme Slalom, where they jump in off of a ramp. And we also have a great youth paddle event. So we're trying to engage our outreach programs and really introduce the youth to this, the youth to these sports, let them know that that's an opportunity that they have through River Sport and as they continue on. And we will have fireworks Friday night and Saturday night.
I really want to hammer home the Super Cup. So we've chased this event for a couple of years. It got delayed as everything else did, along with the Olympics last year. And this is an international competition of the best rowers. It's really like they're just restaging the Olympic event here a month after the Olympics. And what I think is really fun for them and for us is that in Tokyo, they don't, they don't have any crowds. They're not getting cheered the way they deserve to be. So I really want people, I really hope people in Oklahoma City will come out. The big event is that Saturday night, the, the 20th, right? Yeah. And, or what, what's the Saturday?
21st, yeah.
21st, okay. So Saturday 21st, fireworks afterwards, under the lights, internationally televised. It's a big deal for Oklahoma City, so definitely wanted to emphasize that. But the whole event sounds great. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I'm just happy to hear we're going to have more fireworks. That always makes me happy. And clearly you were here a couple of weeks ago as we were kicking off the Olympics. And I, I did get to make the fireworks. So that was, to me, the best part of the opening night for the Olympics is to have that localization right here in our own city. And to the mayor's point, I think we're all looking forward to the possibilities in being able to cheer on folks from all across our city and our state, not really our country, coming to experience a piece of heaven, should I say, that a lot of people don't realize we possess in Oklahoma City. So thank you all for all you're doing and looking forward to August.
Great. Well, do we want to move for approval on the permit? Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, 8C is a revocable permit with Sky Tech Data Solutions doing businesses, honeymoon rock fest 2021, for honeymoon rock fest 2021, September 18th through the 19th, using Wheeler Park. We do have Leah Sisler?
Sigler, sorry.
Welcome. Share a few words about the event.
Um, yes. So I, this all started as a celebration of getting married, which is going to be, I'm getting married in the middle of this. But basically, we've worked really hard to put together a great music festival that not where people can not only come to see, you know, 10 great performances per day, but also a lot, or some of the artists have agreed to officiate where people can actually get married onstage during, during a break in the performance. But we have some, some amazing, I'm so nervous, I'm sorry. And we have some amazing bands that, that are, are going to play. And it starts at noon until 11:00 PM at Wheeler Park on the 18th, September 18th and 19th.
Great. And also Charity Foreman signed up. I don't know if Charity needs to speak. It's, you don't have to. Okay. All right. All right, well then, I guess we, this is, yeah, wards four and six again. So why don't we reverse it this time? Councilwoman Hammond?
Sounds like a, oh, I don't know. Oh my God, sorry. It sounds like a great time and I'll move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. You did great. All right, 8D, revocable permit with the United States Army Reserve, 401st Engineering Company, to hold the 401st Engineering Company HelloCast and improved rafting operations training and family day at Point One of the Lake Stanley Draper Reservoir and Reservation. I don't believe we have anyone signed up to speak. Councilman Stone?
I'll just say, I'm, personally, I'm excited about this. Being able to see some of our Army Reserve members and their families out enjoying Draper Lake is pretty exciting to me. So I'll definitely move it for approval.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8E, revocable right-of-way use permit with the Paseo Artists Association to hold the Paseo Arts Festival Saturday, September 4th through September 6th on Paseo Drive. Please, I didn't sign up, but whoever wants to introduce themselves, feel free.
Sorry, I thought we were, we didn't need to. Amanda Bleakley, I'm the Executive Director of the Paseo Arts Association. And we're just here to announce that we have moved our festival this year from Memorial Day weekend to Labor Day weekend. We're really excited that we'll be able to do a festival. Last year, we canceled it. It will be the 44th Annual Festival for Oklahoma City. We will have about 90 artists and 15 food vendors and at least 52 music acts and entertainers. And, and that's about it. It's a three-day, really fun art festival that's outdoors that we've been doing for 44 years.
Awesome. Councilman Cooper?
Good morning.
Hi.
First, all my love to you all for your endurance during the pandemic and having to really renegotiate how to provide community space to folk in the most safe and responsible way. So my, my hats off to everyone involved with the Paseo.
Thank you.
Of course. And very excited about this event. And though I'm a man of a lot of words, the only word I'm here to say right now is move approval.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you very much for being here. All right, now we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through E we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now we'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A and B we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We will now adjourn OC PPA and reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves at the halfway through page three of your printed agenda, and we are on item nine, the consent docket. We have presentations scheduled for items CD, CH, CI, CJ, CK. Is there any other item that a member of council wishes to pull out for separate discussion or a separate vote? It's pretty much just, well, CD and then CH through CK.
I'll need to step out for a vote on CD.
Okay.
Mayor, item AZ.
Yes. Some of these are just going to be for comment, please, and then I think one for a separate vote. So item AM, if we could have city staff speak a little bit more background on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And then will we be discussing item BF? I know that was something we deferred from the previous council meeting.
There's not a scheduled presentation, but if you wish to.
No, not necessarily. I just didn't know if there was anything anyone needed to say about it. I did, however, item BH, even though that's just outside of Ward Two, it's connecting to a Ward Two Street Enhancement at Portland that I'm very, I find very exciting. So BH.
Okay.
And then BK and L are related. If I could just hear a little bit more about why we're doing that work there, it'd be helpful. And then, and then, I'd like item CY for a separate vote, please.
Okay, sure.
And that will be all. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is that all? All right, why don't we handle the separate votes first and we'll take them in order. So we're going to start with item nine, CD. Councilwoman Hammond? And there is a presentation here.
Yes, so Aubrey McDermott, one of our assistant city managers, is here to give us a presentation, just to give us an update. She had talked about this previously, but an update on the Better Way Program.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Aubrey McDermott, Assistant City Manager. I know that we have briefed you on this program a few times before, but for the benefit of others in the community, I wanted to give you an overview of it. We're excited to bring a new program to Oklahoma City. This is a program that Mayor Richard Berry in Albuquerque, New Mexico, started in 2015. It was called There's a Better Way. And he had a real focus on trying to help people find their way out of homelessness into housing. So he saw a need in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and he developed a program to help people with resources that they would need to find their way with mental health services and support to get into sustainable employment and also give the community a better way to donate their funds to help this goal. So this program was successful in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and was replicated across the country in many communities to fit their needs. And the premise of the program today is to deploy resources like employment specialists and caseworkers through a van that picks people up that are panhandling or referred or homeless and help them, when they're on the streets, figure out what their barriers are, what their needs are, to get them into housing and into employment. So in exchange for them picking people up and helping, they give them a job for a day. And the job for a day is community beatification services. They get paid $65 for doing that day labor. And at the same time, they have the caseworkers and employment specialists work with those people to try to figure out how to help them. So it's a great model. It's gotten good success in other communities and we'd like to replicate that here. A few years ago, Mental Health Association of Oklahoma visited Albuquerque. They tried to learn more about the program, figure out how to develop a model for it and administer it in the state of Oklahoma. And the Mental Health Association developed an operational model that could be implemented by local partners. In 2018, Mental Health Association partnered with the city of Tulsa to establish the state's first Better Way program there. So Tulsa's program's been in operation now for more than two years, through a pandemic even, and they've experienced really good success. At the time that we got numbers from them, at the end of their two-year mark, their participants had cleaned up over 21,000 pounds of trash from public areas. That was the benefit, one of the benefits the city received. The other benefit was 66 people that participated in the program found full-time employment and 14 people moved out of the streets into safe places to live. So we would like to partner with Mental Health Association of Oklahoma to establish that program here in our community. And this agreement before you today is a one-year agreement with the option to renew for four additional years. Mental Health Association provides the specialized employees, the equipment, the supplies, the advertising and outreach services, and the continuing to education and training to run the program. The city of Oklahoma City will provide a van from our fleet to be used and gas money for the vehicle. And we also have a new homelessness strategies outreach coordinator position that we've just hired. Her name is Lindsay Kate. She'll be starting in a few weeks. She'll be helping to facilitate this program, connect resources and partners, and continue to work on the development and partnerships of the program over time. The total program cost is about $271,000 a year, and the city's contribution is $150,000 this year. And that's thanks to United Way of Central Oklahoma for contributing $120,000 for the establishment of the program here. And we also want to thank Innismuch Foundation for donating $10,000 to offset our startup costs. In addition, we have different program partners. The Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma has also offered to partner with us to provide box lunches for our participants. So we want to offer our sincere gratitude to them and to the Mental Health Association of Oklahoma, whose CEO, Terry White, and chief programs officer, Mark Davis, are here today and we can help respond to any questions you have about the program.
Aubrey, thank you. I'm very hopeful that this program will result in a similar type of success as we've seen in other parts of the country. Can you talk about in terms of, maybe it's not been determined at this point, but what would be considered a successful program? And then secondly, and probably more importantly, are you prepared to provide monthly or some type of periodic report, providing us with data to allow us to help understand the level of success this program is generating?
Absolutely. The reporting is a requirement in the contract. And we've seen the city of Tulsa's reports that show the progress, the expenditures, the number of participants, number of participants that have actually been able to be connected with different services. And as you can imagine how that works, is when you make a connection with someone, it might take four, five, or six touches with that person in order to figure out how to get them the help that they need. So there's kind of a rolling or a cascading success report at the end of that process. In terms of what success looks like, I might defer to Terry, who has been working on this program in Tulsa, to kind of give us a good expectation of what we might see in the first year and in coming years with that, if that's okay, Terry?
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Holt, council members. I'm Terry White and I'm the CEO of Mental Health Association Oklahoma. For us, for many folks, when you look at programs, sometimes people just think that the basics of the program are the success. Are we serving people? Meaning, are we picking people up? Are they doing a good day's work? Are they getting paid? But for those, for us, that's considered an output. For us, the program outcomes are actually, are we connecting people to services? The number one goal is employment services. And specifically, what a Better Way does is it allows opportunities to create people to connect to competitive employment. The outcome data that Aubrey was sharing with you is that when we work with folks, the way the program works, and I'll try to make it quick, we really love the program, but I know you all don't want to spend your entire morning talking about a Better Way. But the way the program works, when we pick up people in the morning, it's at 7:30, they work the full day, but during the lunch break, that's when our case managers really get to sit down and talk one-on-one with them. The ultimate goal of the program is competitive employment. We create employment partners here, just like we have in Tulsa over the last four years, that are willing to offer people the opportunity to go to work in competitive employment and move out of our program. But there's a host of other outcomes that we measure. We connect people to mental health and substance abuse services. We connect people to housing. We connect people to medical care. And so what we've seen in Tulsa, in addition to people getting competitive employment, is people getting housed, which is a huge success. We've also seen decreases in medical visits, like ER visits and other things, because we're able to connect them to those services and other services we offer, like Oklahoma City's first street medicine team that was started last year.
Dr. White, thank you. And those are the types of items I would like to focus on as well. Meaningful work, development of transferable job skills that allows that individual to start assuming some personal responsibility and freedom, basically. If they can be gainfully employed, that's a great step towards self-sufficiency, getting them off the street, permanent housing. So that's where I would really like to see us focus on. The other outcomes are nice, you know, cleaning up the areas and things like that, but turning that person's life around is the important part. And what concerns me, editorial comment, are placing people in some type or form of employment that doesn't provide development of skills. It's just a notch or a level above what they've been doing, living off the streets, basically. So I would put as much emphasis as possible on skills development for these individuals because that really changes their lives around. And in today's environment, where businesses are begging for people to come to work, it seems like you're in a good situation to have success. So I'm looking forward to these reports that we'll receive on a periodic basis. Thank you.
Terry, please tell the United Way, the Innismuch Foundation, and the Regional Food Bank how much we appreciate their helping get this program kicked off and started. And like David, I look forward to seeing you again in the near future with additional statistics and information and also in other ways we may help. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'd like to invite all of the council members and the mayor, once the team is up and going, assuming this is something you approve, to come out and visit and go on a visit with us. We'd love to have you. We will certainly thank our partners. But assuming this is approved, we also really want to thank you all as the city. This would not be, we wouldn't be in Tulsa without the mayor and the city of Tulsa. We will not be in Oklahoma City without the mayor and the city of Oklahoma City. And we're grateful for all that you've done to be interested in this program and hopefully your support.
May I, just for my own clarification, you mentioned some metrics you're looking at, so I heard housing. Would you mind just walking me back through those again?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the program, the outputs, if you will, that Commissioner Greenwell and I were talking about are, how many people are we picking up? Are they doing a day's work? How much trash do we pick up? Those types of things. The outcomes, which Commissioner Greenwell and I agree are the most important pieces that we measure, how many people do we get placed in competitive employment? How many people are connected to housing? How many people get connected to mental health and substance abuse services? And then depending on individuals, there may be other services that we connect them to that would be part of those reports. We can't predict all the connections we'll need to make until we meet these individuals, but those are some of the examples of outcomes that we'll measure.
Wonderful. Thank you for walking me back through those again.
Sure.
I'm interested in every single one of them. Especially, though it might, it might, I think it's an easy one for us to overlook, although I suspect knowing your dedication to your work, you would not overlook this one, but the mental health itself, the well-being of this individual. And I would be very curious, because it's not my world, it's just I've learned a lot over the last couple of years, learning about this particular world of mental health access. I'm curious how many folk, as we move through these outcome discussions, there might be some folk who, the narrative my council, a fellow council member just described, might not be possible, right? There are some people who, just them getting in a healthier mental state and off of the drugs or off of the addiction, whatever the addiction might be, that's the win. Like their life is the win, right? And that they're not living maybe in the sort of situation they might have been previously when they were unhoused. So I'm very interested in that particular metric, the individual's well-being. So however you can present that back to us is something I'm equally interested in, in addition to what about these transferable skill sets? Who's housed? So I just think that's very important. It's really heavy on my mind is the actual individual and their being, their being. And I realize that sometimes we might measure success differently. And I just think that this mental health component, I mean, it's right there on your mask, is the most important one for me personally. And I want to also say, Aubrey, thank you so much for your work on this. Thank you to anyone's staff who has contributed to this. I know that this has been something pretty heavy on some residents' mind, and I'm very excited that we're able to do this. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, Terry. All right. If there's no other questions or comments, then we can do a vote on just item nine, CD. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And with Councilwoman Hammond out of the room. Okay, now we're going to go to the other one that requires a separate vote, item nine, CY. So Councilman Cooper? Councilman Cooper?
Yes, thank you. I was just pulling up.
This is for you to leave, actually.
Oh, I leave?
Yeah.
On CY?
Oh, I thought it was because you work for I-89.
No.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
But that was, that was like the moment where like I'm back in like junior high or something. It's like, hey, sorry, wrong party, buddy.
I'm sorry. I thought you had a conflict. You want to just vote on it separately? Okay.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, very good.
Okay, so I wanted to vote for this separately, really to reify a vote I took last year on this exact same topic. And so I wanted to read from a Tulsa World article about adverse childhood experiences. It's a reminder, those of us who helped craft MAPS 4, we remember those words, adverse childhood experiences, playing a pretty significant role in the addition of youth centers in MAPS 4. So I just wanted to read this. Oklahoma ranks number one in the country in percentage of people with an adverse childhood experience score of two or more, according to the 2017 National Survey of Children's Health. And that might explain why the state ranks high for a list of disparate social problems from obesity and drug addiction to cancer rates and domestic violence. Science has found ACEs to be strong predictors of cognitive, behavioral, and physical health and mental wellness problems. They include household dysfunction, neglect, abuse, poverty, crime, substance abuse, and mental illness. It's only been in recent years the state of Oklahoma is acknowledging the neuroscience surrounding adverse childhood experiences. It's only been in recent years, conversation has shifted, right? Amongst teachers, administrators, parents, about what are the factors that are shaping what, for too long, we just call discipline issues in our students. And we would treat these discipline issues as, if anyone recalls last year's conversation on this, I said, as a former middle schooler. on this, I said as a former middle school teacher, I saw too often students where they would, a teacher to punish them would remove them from the class, send them down to in-school suspension, they'd lose instruction. For a day or two, maybe three, they come back to class, the kid has missed the lesson, so now they feel really dumb. They act out, they, and that's their own word. I hear my students, they would refer to themselves using that language. It's not really a word I prefer to use. They'd act out by getting on their phone or getting in a fight or whatever it might be, so now they're back in ISS again, maybe even out of school. And this kid gets labeled a problem child, a discipline problem. Heck, you might even see one of these students on the nightly news when people talk about all the fights that happen in our schools. But ACE scores are telling us the real backstory, that every child is a story. They are, there's exposition there. And it's those traumas, once we start ticking them off, once we get to that score of four or higher, we have set up a kiddo for all those things I just read to you all, all of those things. And it's only been in recent years that we have started rethinking our approach to our students, not just thinking of them as discipline problems, but how do we actually reach them and work with them, ensure they are able to thrive and be successful? And that is why two of the community policing resolution items that we included as up-for-discussion as budget amendments later this year was, thanks to Councilwoman Nice, expanding our Police Athletic League or expanding our FACT program, so that law enforcement officers are better able to build relationship with youth who are experiencing all kinds of the highest statistics in the country. That's not my opinion, I just quoted the data. So to me, as I said last year, I would like to see, in the place of school resource officers, PAL and FACT, because I know that our kids do not just need to be sent to ISS when things go not the way the teacher and the rest of the students would have liked in the room. It's not to give them office referral after office referral, it's not to kick them out of school. It is to get to the root of what has shaped that child to act out in those ways. And we are only more recently, in recent, excuse me, in recent years, taking this approach to thinking about what is happening in our public schools. So I just wanted to pull this out for a separate vote, because I do not believe that the current school resource officer approach is the approach that's really going to heal to, lead to healing in our students, restorative justice in our students, grace in our students, and the ability to get them back on path in ways that I have actually heard have occurred when PAL and FACT are involved. So if we're going to have officers in our school, that would be the approach I would take. I've heard from too many students, past and present, who say that they feel, especially when there are metal detectors in their schools, we did not have these in the Compaq Chalk Tower where I went to school, they say they feel sometimes like they are walking into a prison, right? Into a prison. And the presence of a law enforcement officer doesn't necessarily help create a counter-narrative for them. That is from my students. You may not have liked what I just heard, that is from our students, and I listen to our students. So for that reason, I wanted to pull that out for a separate vote. We know those budget amendment conversations are coming, and it is my sincere hope that those final recommendations from those budget amendments will in fact include the expansion of PAL and FACT, the way that we recommended, and God willing, maybe we can see a whole new way of rethinking how to help traumatized kids succeed and thrive in this city. So that's why I wanted to pull that out separate. I understand I might be the lone voice here, or one of the lone voices on this opinion, but I, as one of the very first teachers on this council, promised my students I would speak their experiences into existence, and that is what I am doing on this council today. So thank you.
All right. So we've got item nine CY. We could take more discussion, or somebody could just make a motion to move that particular item.
Take a motion, please.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Passes six to three. All right. Now we're going back to the top of the order here and going through the items that we either had presentations for or council members had pulled out for just a separate comment, and we'll take them in order and start with item AM, Councilman Cooper.
Less comment for me and more questions. I'd just like to hear more about this particular item, please.
Donna Cervantes is here with, from the Planning Department to speak to this item.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity, Donna Cervantes. This is the eighth year that 39th Street is coming to you to be part of the Commercial District Revitalization Program, and we're excited to see the progress happening through these funds. They are being utilized in a great way. I hope you are able to get over to the 39th Street District and see the beautiful new murals that are underway. We have, I believe it's their second authorized mural permitted through the city that is being done right now, and that's just phase one. We will see that completed. This is at 39th and Barnes. Again, the beautiful, beautification efforts that occur through this funding and the strengthening of the boards, the relationships, the leadership in the community means so much. It attracts new investment. I saw an article in the Oklahoma just this week about the hotel that's being renovated, and new investment happening in the districts means so much to our city in so many ways, new jobs, cleaning up, and strengthening the community. And 39th is just another example of that. They are undergoing a streetscape enhancement. That's separate funding, but again, it shows the investment. And so this contract will be for one year. It's $18,000 to support their efforts, and I know it's well-used and well-appreciated. So thank you for that support. Any questions?
Just wanted to say thank you to you and anyone who's been working with you toward the vision you're describing for the historic 39th Street District, and just wanted to say good luck and keep going.
Thank you.
All right. Item AZ, Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I just wanted to mention, this is a part of the community that I share with Councilman Stone, and we have some arterial street resurfacing. So I think I join him in saying, we are both excited about what this is bringing to this part of our community on Southeast 44th. So for those who do not know, Ward Seven stretches to Southeast 44th and Bryant. So we have a very large part of the ward. So I'm grateful that we have partnerships with our fellow council members to look at how we resurface our streets. So that's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Item BH, Councilman Cooper. And if you just want to, then BK and BL too.
Let's see. Yes, I was just, I'd like to hear a little bit more about BH specifically because 23rd Street, right there at the Windsor District, is kind of unique, right? It's where Ward Three, Ward Six, Ward Two are all kind of, they're intersecting in some really neat ways, kind of building on what Councilwoman Nice was just saying, it's kind of cool whenever there's a moment where it's more than just the one counselor. So I just wanted to hear a little bit more about this project, because, you know, in Ward Two, from 23rd to 36th, we're also receiving a street enhancement project, so I like, like the idea of where we're heading to the south.
Thank you, Councilman Eric Quinger, Public Works Director. The item today is actually just declaring the necessity for acquiring certain easements for this particular project. This is a project that's a street enhancement project, it's part of our 2017 bond issue, and the design is underway. It is North Portland, from Northwest 10th to 23rd, and a lot of the improvements will include new ADA accessible sidewalks. It also includes a lot of pedestrian safety enhancements, new lighting, and then also additional crosswalks. And so as we're in the design phase right now, the construction is not anticipated to begin until spring of 2022, so we'll still be bringing back final plans for this council to consider as we get ready to finalize that. So this is just a part of that process, because certain parts of the enhancement are going to require some additional right-of-way outside of the current street.
Thank you, and thank you for the timeline as well. Might you know the timeline for the 23rd to 36th street enhancement project? I can't recall for the life of me.
So I just need to bring that back to you. I don't have that today.
That'll be fine. Thank you so much, Eric. I appreciate you.
Yeah, BK and BL.
That's what the mayor said. Yeah, I just wanted to learn a little bit more about the ADA work here as well, please.
Sure. So items BK and BL are actually related, and these have been to the Traffic Commission and are recommended for the city council to approve. This is parking for the United Way, located at McKinley and Northwest 28th. They have some existing inset parking that had not been previously permitted, and there's some changes that are being made. And so the first item is actually creating officially 45-degree angled parking. The second item actually creates the necessary ADA parking to complement that. So with the council's consideration today, the final hearing will be on August 17th. The item will be brought back to you after the hearing, and so if there are no comments, we'll be able to place that into effect at that time.
Wonderful. Thank you for that, that backstory. I appreciate you. I think that's, Mayor, were there more on mine?
Not at that time.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have a presentation on item CH.
Kathy O'Connor, I'm sorry, Kathy O'Connor is here from the Alliance for Economic Development to talk with us about this item and to introduce our speakers this morning.
Good morning. The item before you today is a resolution to be introduced and to set a public hearing and final approval for an allocation of tax increment financing dollars. The, the public hearing will be held on August 17. This item allocates an amount of $1,500,000 from TIF II to this project, and then an additional $5,743,571 from TIF XIII to support the development of the Boulevard Place project. The project will have 265 apartment units located immediately east of the Omni Hotel. Now I'd like to introduce Stephen Watts and Tim Strange with Rose Rock Development, who have a brief presentation about the project.
Thank you, Kathy, for getting us to this point. You and your team have done a great job. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Manager, and City Council for allowing us to make this presentation today on Boulevard Place. This is a model of the building. As you can see, the front of the building facing Oklahoma City Boulevard with the parking structure to the south, so you get an idea of the scale of the project. As Kathy said, it's located on the corner of Shields and the Oklahoma City Boulevard, just east of the Omni Hotel and north of the Convention Center parking structure. Thank you, COTPA, for building that structure. We'll be leasing spaces from COTPA for our residents. So the backstory on the project is that Rose Rock Development Partners was named the conditional redeveloper by Ocurea in June of 2018 after an RFP and competitive process. One of the reasons we believe we were selected is that our building is an eight-story steel frame structure, and it meets the building typology and actually exceeds the minimum building height requirement of seven stories for the quarter shore area, and it matches up very well against the Omni Hotel at 17 stories. Since June of 2018, we've been dealing with environmental issues on the site. At one time, there was a gas manufacturing plant on the site, and so there's benzene in the groundwater, it's contaminated, and there's also contaminated soil, and all of this has to be cleaned up. The cleanup has involved drilling injection wells to pump an oxidizing material downhole to neutralize the benzene. This process will continue during and post-construction through an underground piping system, and we'll also install a vapor mitigation barrier during construction. We've been invited by HUD, who is providing our loan, that's Housing and Urban Development, to make our firm application submission. We hope to do that by mid-September with a closing and start of construction in early 2022. I'd like to show you a short video of the project, and then Stephen will take it over. This is traveling north on Shields. We'll be turning west along the Boulevard here, so you can see the front of the building. That's the Omni to the right. This is traveling along the Boulevard West, front of the building there, the red awning, and to the right there is our outdoor seating and area for our restaurant, right on the corner. This is now traveling east along the Boulevard in a reverse direction from which we came. You can see the corner there, the outdoor seating, the folks standing. This is our rooftop amenity deck, a little outdoor seating, grilling, fire pits, and waiting pools, and an outdoor kitchen, and our fitness center next to it. So now I'd like Stephen to speak to the rest of the slides.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, councilors, for the opportunity to speak to you today about our project Boulevard Place that we're very excited about. I wanted to go through some key numbers on this project. Boulevard Place delivers in many ways. We're going to have our lowest price units at 1,050 per unit, eight stories, 265 units. We're going to be utilizing about one parking space per unit in the COTPA parking garage with the ability to flex to additional units as needed, or additional parking spaces, excuse me. Total square footage, 260,000 square feet, and retail square footage of 5,000. Total project cost of 71 million, and we'll be purchasing the land for almost 2.5 million. One of our design objectives was to create an activated ground floor. We have the 5,000 square feet on the corner of Broadway and Oklahoma City Boulevard, excuse me, Robinson, Oklahoma City Boulevard, and multiple exterior seating options outside. We originally had additional retail on the east side, but we opted for additional units as we thought the demand is very strong for units, and some of the feedback we received from HUD was that they wanted more apartment units instead of retail. Talking through the ground floor here, you can see the units on the east side on the ground floor, and then the retail on the west side. And also, there's a courtyard for a swimming pool and grilling and other amenities on the ground floor, in addition to the amenity deck on the eighth floor, where we'll have our gym and our lounge, which you can see pictured here. The nice thing about our gym is it will look north into the city, and we'll also have a lounge and a business center for our residents to use, in addition to the outdoor kitchen that we've already spoken about. Talking about the total number of units, we've got 41 studios, 156 one-bedroom units, 63 two-bedroom units, and five three-bedroom units, most of these being on the seventh We also have a mixed income program at Boulevard Place. This is a voluntary program. We're going to be setting aside 36 units for workforce housing. That's between 80 and 120% of AMI would be your income level to qualify to live in these units. This mixed income program encourages income diversity within the living community, and we are not seeking GOAT bonds for this, for these workforce housing units. I'm going to bring Tim back up to talk about the TIF ask.
So as Kathy mentioned, our ask is for $1,500,000 upfront for additional remediation related to the environmental, and then $575,000 a year for 10 years. Let me give you some detail on that million five, because it sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but the scope is very large. There is 1,825 cubic yards of concrete underneath the ground that has to be removed. When the concrete comes out, the soil will come out as well. All of that's contaminated, has to be tagged, and then sent off to a fill. Once we pull all the concrete and dirt out, then we have to truck in 480 truckloads of dirt to backfill. A lot of dirt. And then when we're drilling the piers for the foundation, we'll create some more contaminated soil by doing that, and water, that has to be tagged and removed. And at the end of that process, then, because we've disturbed the current injection wells and monitoring wells, those have to be replaced. So all of that adds up to $1,500,000. And then, of course, the annual ask we're talking about here. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have about it.
Yeah.
Stephen, why don't you come back up?
I have a question regarding, so the, the workforce units, that would be $1,050 a month, how many square feet would that be? Is those, are those just studios? Is it a mix of one-bedroom, two-bedrooms as well?
So we, on the studios, those start at 1,050, and those are about 450 square feet. And then our one-bedroom units range between 450 and 500 square feet, and those start at 1,100 per month. And those are all utilities. And those are all utilities included on those units. The market rate units in the project all have utilities paid by the resident.
So the workforce units really only accommodate a single person, not necessarily families that are nurses, teachers, that sort of thing?
We do have four two-bedroom units that are in the workforce housing program that, with rent starting at 1,800 a month.
So that's definitely not for someone at 80%. That's closer to the 100% AMI, I would think. I haven't done the math in my head, but for the 1,050 a month, that's really 80% AMI for someone not to be cost burdened by their rent. So somebody making... Which, again, I just always feel the need to point out to this group of people and to whoever might be listening, that minimum wage in our city, and if you then factor in service workers who make a pitiful wage and are supposed to, I guess, get tips made up to maybe make minimum wage, like, that is not a living wage. Like, they are well below 80% AMI. So I guess I just, I always have concerns when we're using public money and say nice things like workforce housing when we know that the need is really for those folks at the lower end of 60 and below. We just had a meeting this morning about our affordable housing plan, and the outlook was not good, as I feel like I've been saying for the whole time I've been on this body. So I just, I always have concerns, again, when we're using public money and not getting really a true public benefit for more people in the community. The person, the consultant who spoke to the affordable housing plan said, you know, our economy is good, housing prices are generally fine, but there's a huge, there's still a significant portion of the population that none of that applies to. And I just, so much about the quarter shore plan doesn't feel like it takes that into account. Our TIF policies don't take that into account. It really feels like what we're doing is making spaces for maybe people like me, maybe. Like, I probably would like, I would struggle. I would struggle to pay that rent. I would be cost burdened if I was trying to live here at that, at that rate, and only 450 square feet. So I just, again, I can't... And so knowing that I feel like I am somewhere, I'm pretty stable, I have, you know, like, I have no history of evictions, et cetera, like, this is not meeting the need for what the need in our community actually is, and I know I'm not going to stop this train from moving, but I just feel the need to at least speak that and make sure that that is publicly known and discussed, because I just, every time we have these deals, it feels like we're supposed to be patting ourselves on the back, and it really doesn't feel like something to pat ourselves on the back for.
To the point of everything she said, I don't have to say it, because I'm one of those people, and I can't live there. And I think about the people in my community who also can't live there, and I understand as we continue to look at workforce housing and what that means, and who really gets to benefit from either affordable housing or workforce housing, and the people that need it the most don't. And as we're looking at even this particular development, I know a couple of years ago, and I'll continue to say, we had a conversation presented to our community about this particular project, and the, as it was presented, it would be affordable in workforce for the community. And now, here we are, 2021, and that conversation, we can't have it. So as we look at how we are distributing TIF dollars, especially in the realm of 1.5 million for environmental remediation, I want us to remember this conversation, because we're going to continue to have it as we look at Northeast Oklahoma City and continued environmental remediation that we're going to have to have for projects to exist. And when this number or higher shows up, I would hope that we would not frown at another project that needs this type of remediation or more in the realm of being able to develop for the community that it should actually benefit. So, I mean, I've had conversations about this with the developers, and it's very uneasy as we look at who this is really being built for. And I know we're looking at restaurants, we're looking at all of these things, work, play, live, but again, you know, if we're truly going to be 1OKC, we have to really bring it together, and this is not bringing our community or our city together when you have folks who can't even afford to live there. They can probably barely work there and still have to figure out how to get home. So those are my comments about this development.
Is this on? Did I press something? I'm on? Okay. So first, in June of 2018, I had the honor prior to serving on council of serving on the Transit Trust, which approved this item, actually. And it was the first time I'd ever participated in an economic... Really? Y'all can hear me? This is, this is good? Okay. This sounds weird up here. Thank you for that clarification. No, I was so excited when you all presented this to us in 2018. It was one of the last things on my agenda to do that day before I went to a teacher conference down in Dallas. That's about to matter in a moment for some comments I'm going to make. And the thing that had me the most excited about this project, and I went back, I loved this project so much, I kept it in my office on display. That's how much I was excited about this. And let me tell you why I was excited. I was excited because, back here on the last page, and you got to hear me when I tell you excited, this topic came up a couple of days ago with someone who matters quite a bit to me. We were talking about housing affordability and rents and these sorts of things, and I brought up this project, and I brought up the fact that a studio apartment was going to be $650, right next to the Omni, right next to Scissor Tail. To Councilwoman Nyses' point, my rent is a little beneath that. If it were to be 650, I would be in trouble. My budget, I have the shooiest of string budgets, teaching at two adjunct, as an adjunct at two universities and serving on this council. Honor of my life to do all three of those jobs, just pure and simple. Love teaching, love being up here, love being with people. $650, and I know that's actually below where the average one-bedroom is. I believe it's closer to 7 or 8 now for the average one-bedroom in Oklahoma City. So imagine my just excitement to see that we were going to, in the heart of downtown, have someone be able to pay 650 and live around other folk who were paying different market rates, right? It was a mixed income, mixed retail, mixed used. I loved it. So I was very worried yesterday to see what was once $650 for a studio go to 1050. Impossible. Impossible. And the people who are here, people who are watching at home, like, this is the face of someone, I know it's masked right now, this is the face of someone who would absolutely right now not be able to afford 1,050 a month. Absolutely, I can't do it. And I know sometimes in our society, we've had this backstory that we tell people, that like, if someone can't afford these sorts of things, I know we're also not supposed to talk about our salaries, but all mine's public, so there it is. We've told sometimes that the size of the house we own, or the size of the car, and the types of trips we can take is a marker of our success. Well, that's never been the game I've played in my mind, and I don't think there's anything wrong in a lot of ways with the fact that the income that I make, that 30-something thousand dollars a year, it brings me such joy doing this work, I don't care, right? But shouldn't someone like me be able to afford? Like, and then think of our baristas, think of our servers, think of people in our retail industry, think of those people Councilwoman Hammond is talking about making 750 an hour. Think of that young girl two weeks ago who stood at that podium and also was nervous.
Just a second. 725.
I'm so sorry. Thank you, Councilwoman.
That's $14,000 a year, by the way.
And in those in-school suspension moments, when I was there with those students, we would add up 725 times a month, and we'd take out taxes. And that's how I was able to convince those kids to come along for the ride with me to get the sort of skills that Councilman Greenwell was talking about, to follow me as a college prep teacher. But something is so fundamentally broken at that earlier childhood moment and these traumas, that by the time they grow on to become our adults, too many of them, we lose them, and then we end up with this high incarceration rate and this high eviction rate. It's all connected. That Better Way program was connected to this conversation. So, no, I was so excited, and I shared this success story just yesterday morning of $650 in downtown Oklahoma City. So for later today to read something different has broken my heart in a way that I didn't see coming. And I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't mean this in a blame way, I'm just telling you, this is my experience of this project, something that I was at the highest of heights with, but now truly does not vibe with the fact that even after a historic teacher walkout, the starting pay for a teacher in the state of Oklahoma is $36,000. They can't afford this. They cannot live here. We've got to start thinking as a body about who the majority of our people are and what their incomes are. That's all I really have to say for now. Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question? What is market rate currently on 450 square feet in downtown? Do you know?
You're seeing anywhere from about $1,000 to $1,250.
Including utilities or not including utilities?
Not including utilities. And if I could respond real quick about the, you know, the differences, you know, when we presented this project originally in 2018, our costs were 51 million. Now, our costs are 71 million. Construction costs, especially steel, the amount that it's gone up is unbelievable. Everything has gone up in building a project. PVC, which is all your plumbing, electrical conduit, drywall, all of our studs are steel. The cost to build, unfortunately, in 2021, you cannot rent an apartment for $650 anymore. And it's sad, and we are committed, Rose Rock Development is committed to building affordable housing. We have another project down the street that we're going to be building 314 units, hopefully, of affordable housing. We were awarded the Conditional Redeveloper for that project, so we are committed to building affordable housing. Unfortunately, the cost on this project to build an eight-story steel frame building, it just, that rent level doesn't work anymore. So we've struggled even for these 36 units. It's a voluntary program, and we're not really receiving any gold bonds for or anything like that, so we've struggled. Even with these units, unfortunately, the cost burden for construction is such that it's really, it's really difficult to imagine being able to build that project in 2021 that we'd envisioned in 2018.
This reminds me, thank you for asking that question, Councilman, because the, and thanks for highlighting the bond money, because initially, it was going to include the bond money. Am I wrong with that?
No, you're correct.
Thank you.
And, you know, really what we decided was that a much more efficient use of our very limited affordable housing funding that's provided through the Gold Bond project would be to do it with other projects in other locations, because the cost of construction at this particular location was so high. The location, because of its proximity to the Boulevard and the Omni, needed an eight-story building. It needed something taller and more dense, and that's what the quarter shore plan and the TIF plan projects for that area. So, you know, we made a decision and felt that as staff and working with the City Manager's Office, that a much more efficient use of those limited affordable housing dollars would be to use the money somewhere else, that the amount of subsidy per unit on this project would have been so large that it really just didn't make any kind of financial sense, and it would make much more sense if we could get many, many more affordable units for our dollar in other locations. And that's what, that's what we'll be recommending. They are working on another project at Fourth and Gaylord that is over 300 units of 60% AMI housing, which is kind of the most affordable housing that we can provide through this kind of development, not through the Housing Authority, obviously, but we just felt that it was a much more efficient use of our money to deploy it into other projects where it could go further.
Well, and to the point of that, I think that's, that's why there's an unease with this conversation. We had a presentation in 2018. We had a presentation in front of a whole community in 2019 of people interested in wanting to figure out even if they could invest and work through that part of the conversation. And here we are, 2021, and there's no mention of that in the beginning of this conversation. It's all, okay, here we are. So I think that's, that's why we're having this type of back and forth when we're talking about this, because just, just tell us what happened. Let's be upfront. Let's talk about it, and let us know what you are doing for us to say, okay, if we want to get on board with that, then we can do that. Right now, it's very difficult to get on board with, with these types of developments in communities, again, where we know what has taken place in specific areas of our communities, specifically this particular area of our community, that we know was the hub of certain parts of our community that can no longer afford to stay there if they want it to, because their properties, or not their properties, they were pushed out. Plain and simple, pushed out to not come back. So let's just have the conversation. Now, here we are. So we have this now being introduced, and we'll have our, more conversation about it on the 17th, and hopefully, we'll be able to see what better opportunities can come of 265 units that will be placed in Boulevard Place. And that's, that's just how I personally feel about this. It's very uncomfortable, you know, when we try our best as people who represent certain parts of our community that have been vulnerable, underrepresented, and taken advantage of, to now say, okay, we're going to show you this. Oh, wait, we take that back. You can't have it. That, we have to stop doing that. Let's just have a conversation about what it is and how we get to betterment, to benefit the people that we are serving.
And I'll be really curious what we're going to be able to do with the bond money. I really appreciated that backstory, Kathy. That was very helpful, because I didn't know why exactly. So I'll be curious, see what other projects are there. And to your point, like, yeah, I understand why that location, right? Why we needed certain, the height and these sorts of things, so... But, yeah, I'd like to keep kind of moving forward. Councilman, when you heard the, because I know you come from that development world, when you hear those square footage numbers and stuff like that, and then you think of utilities, like, what came to your mind? I'm just curious.
Well, the one thing that came to my mind, talking about the inclusion of utilities in it, of course, that's, there's a lot of value that can be placed in that, especially for people on a tight budget, I think. You know, we talked this morning in the meeting that we had, or the briefing on housing, affordable housing, and one thing that concerns me right now is with the volatility of the market in Oklahoma City. It's, it's super hot, right? At the same time that it's very hot, the costs of construction are skyrocketing. Well, that creates a lot of risk, a lot of risk for, you know, people that, I can tell you, I know builders that it's, it's like they almost won't enter a contract with somebody because, one, they don't know how long it's going to take to finish the house, and, two, they have no idea what the actual costs are going to be because of the volatility in equipment and materials. So it's, you know, right now, it's a risky time, and unfortunately, that pressure on that end of it makes it even harder when we're having discussions on affordable housing in, you know, how much are we ready to pay in order to subsidize that? And do you subsidize it on a very expensive project, or do you try to subsidize it, like Kathy said, where you can take those dollars, spread them out farther, and help more people be able to attain the type of housing that they should have? So it's not ideal, sure, but I can totally understand why there's ramifications to it.
James, I think to, to expand on what Todd just said as far as volatility... James, I think to expand on what Todd just said as far as volatility is concerned, there's not a day that goes by in the last two months that I don't get a phone call from a client or a prospective client as to what's happened with steel, lumber, building materials. And we know for a fact that steel has gone up over three times what it was in February of this year. We know that deliverability, even if you want to pay that high price, the deliverability has gone from two to four weeks to 10, 12, 14 weeks. And so, I'm not trying to explain what all has happened here, but I do know that, number one, it was a toxic site, and it came under heavy regulation from the DEQ to clean it up. Number two, I know it was heavily vetted by HUD, the project. And number three, I do know that they have been hit with tremendous costs that nobody anticipated, and there are lawsuits all over the United States right now claiming force majeure, act of God, because of the pandemic, trying to deal with these dramatic swings in prices and inflation that is occurring in our country today.
This is all helpful. I think what it, for now, and I'll look forward to the next couple meetings and hearing, again, if anything else is possible here, I think for now, what it kind of solidifies for me is like, yeah, to your point, Councilman Stone, like, what are these other smaller projects, right, with those funds? And then I think the question really clearly in front of us is, what about this TIF, right? And is a TIF then an appropriate thing? And as it stands right now, I tend to not believe that it is, even with that story, the context that you all are giving. So, thank you.
I'd just like to point out, I guess, that it all comes back to the pandemic. So, our discussions about what interventions need to take place to mitigate and lessen the pandemic, both for our healthcare system, the workers in that system, the nurses who can't, and doctors who feel like they can't provide adequate care because they are so overwhelmed by the number of patients they have, and then it also affects supply chains and costs. And so, none of this is not connected. And I think for people who have the sense that, well, we just need to let everyone figure it out on their own, is no. Like, this is all connected, and by helping end the pandemic, increasing vaccinations, other mitigation practices, like wearing a mask, not gathering in large gatherings, which, of course, we approved a few of those today, which is another, whole other thing, but we have plenty of housing subsidies in this country. The largest housing subsidy that we, as a country, give to people is the mortgage interest deduction. It is a tax credit that homeowners get. Renters are not, cannot write off their rent on their taxes. Homeowners, however, if you add up all of the MID money that is given back to people who own their homes, which, as Councilwoman Nice has spoken to, as there's plenty of research on, that is the largest housing subsidy in this country. So, when we talk about a housing bond, or adding bond funding, or putting affordable housing in MAPS, that is a tiny fraction of what kind of subsidies we are giving homeowners in this country. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't help encourage homeownership. However, the scales are not even, and so when we have projects like this at the local level that we have funds, that we can leverage, especially if they're in central locations, near transit, we need to do what we can, because the calls I get every day about, these homeless people are on my doorstep, I'm not going to sell anything, I want these homeless people, what are you doing about the homeless problem? This is what I'm doing. This is what I'm doing. I'm bringing these things up because people don't seem to be listening and don't seem to recognize that the stuff I have been talking about for the last number of years was all presented to us in this affordable housing. Their data is there. We know these things, but we don't have the political will to address them collectively. We just continue doing the same things over and over again and saying, well, we're going to do it more over there, and we're going to do it more over there. But then we get another excuse of prices went up, it's expensive to build things. How much interest do your investors want off of this, for all the other money that you're putting together for this? What kind of return do they expect on their investment?
Investors take risks, so no returns are guaranteed, but it's at least a minimum 8% return on investment.
So, are we not also an investor who's taking a risk?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
So, if we approve this money on August 17th, we become an investor who's taking a risk, the public?
I would agree, yes.
So, again, I don't think we are making back on our investment, what we're investing, when there are people who are situated to make money off of this in a way that is not equitable to what the needs are. So, that's all I have to say.
Any other comments or questions on this item?
Do you need a motion on the joint resolution?
Well, we're still in consent docket, so.
We're still what?
In consent docket.
Okay.
Mayor, just one quick question, and I'm glad Kathy's up here, too. So, at some point, could we get a reminder as to what the long-term plans are in terms of development around Scissor Tail Park, in terms of the combination of hotels and multifamily housing? I'll throw this out, too. Your comment about HUD wanting to limit your retail space, I think is short-sighted on their part in that, from an economic standpoint, that retail space would provide a higher return for you, allow you to reduce the emphasis on rents from your tenants if you so chose. Plus, Kathy and I have spoken about this, I think we're missing the boat if we don't put a greater emphasis on retail development to support continued development in the core of Oklahoma City. We still lack, and when I use the word retail, I do not focus on restaurants and bars. I'm talking about traditional retail stores where you buy things and generate sales tax and things like that. We need to keep that in mind, and I think, again, HUD's short-sighted in trying to limit or reduce your retail space, because it would help you and it would help a lot of people. So, if we could get a, just a reminder as to what long-term plans are along the park area and the Corda Shore development, and I think personally, retail is critical to the success of downtown in that development area. Thank you.
Glad to be there.
City manager, or Kathy? I'm not sure who might know this information, and maybe for the next, in time for the next meeting. I don't really know what the average cost for kind of the range of utilities might be. I'd be very interested to know that number, and what do we consider these utilities as well? I'm not expecting that answer right now at all. I'm just saying, like, that'd be something I'm very interested in knowing.
We can get that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on CH? All right. Thank you all very much for your time. CI, we have a presentation.
Yes, so Kathy's going to give us an update on this, just allocation in the, in TIP-2.
I think we have a couple of slides to show on this one. Again, this is a resolution to be introduced, to set a final hearing date of August 17th for a tax increment financing allocation from TIP-2 for $500,000 for ancillary infrastructure. We had a similar allocation to this several years ago. It was for $300,000 to help us fund different small projects in the downtown TIF district project area, such as improvements to alleys and bike lanes and a wide varieties of sidewalks, just smaller projects that don't cost very much. And this is just an example of what we funded in the past. We did some, several alley improvements. We did a water and sewer line extension up at 12th and Hudson, and some resurfacing at Ninth and Broadway. So, it's just a little bit of money to help fund these smaller projects, get an allocation in place, and then we bring back each individual project for approval as they come up.
Okay.
All right.
All right, then, I guess we'll keep it rolling. CJ.
Stay up here.
Yes, Kathy's show.
The next item is, again, a resolution to set a public hearing date and final approval for a TIF allocation in a total amount not to exceed $2,700,000. $700,000 to be allocated from TIF-2, and $2 million to be allocated from TIF-A, other economic development categories, to support the development and the relocation of Griffin Communications to the Century Center. I'd like to introduce David Griffin, who has a presentation to give this morning, and then I have a few more comments about how the TIF is allocated and structured.
Good morning. Thank you, Kathy. Before we get started, I want to thank Mayor Holt, Kathy O'Connor, of course, and City Manager Freeman for your support of this project. Mayor Holt, it's been two years since we had dinner with our wives at the Oklahoma City Art Museum, where this is your idea. So, thank you very much for that. It took a lot of work to get here. The prospects of moving downtown for our company and me personally are very exciting. In early July, when we announced this to our news, to our staff, that we were purchasing the Century Center, our newsroom, which is made up of young professionals, stood up and cheered. And as someone who's lived in Oklahoma City for over 30 years, I was here before MAPS, I witnessed downtown before MAPS, I was so proud of all this community has accomplished for young people wanting to be downtown. So, that was really fantastic. So, who is Griffin Communications? Griffin Communications was founded by my grandfather in 1908 in McAllister, Oklahoma, as Griffin Grocery Company. It evolved into radio in the 1920s and '30s, 1950s, it evolved into television. Today, Griffin Communications is made up of two TV stations in Oklahoma City, two TV stations in Tulsa, five radio stations in, excuse me, five radio stations in Tulsa, statewide radio news network, a growing outdoor business, digital and static, and a thriving digital business. In all, we have 420 employees in Oklahoma City and Tulsa, who are all based on one, or all focused on one mission. And that mission is to keep Oklahomans safe, informed, and entertained. In the future, we would love to add outdoor, more additional outdoor, expand our digital operations, and we would love to have Oklahoma City Radio. Our objective with Oklahoma City Radio would be to put together a statewide news, potentially sports network, which I think is much, much needed in this state, and we're keeping our fingers crossed that that will happen one day. And I can't think of a better place for that to be than right there in the heart of downtown Oklahoma City. So, why are we moving? Our current location is the original home of KOMA Radio and is over 70 years old. It's not the ideal, modern workspace that you would want. Secondly, we're at a point in our, in our technology lifecycle where we've got to replace a lot of equipment, news production equipment, such as audio boards, routers, switchers. We also have to refurbish our set, and if we make those investments in our current facility, because they're permanent investments, we'll be there for the next 10 to 15 years. And lastly, 10 years ago, we had a similar problem in Tulsa, and we teamed up with the George Kaiser Family Foundation and built a new building in downtown Tulsa, and the results have been extraordinary. Our staff feels incredible pride about being downtown. We bring downtown to the viewers' homes. Secondly, we built something bigger than ourselves. We built, helped build, the Tulsa Arts District, which is a thriving arts and entertainment district. And what we want to do is have that same impact in downtown Oklahoma City. I do have a short video to show you what we think the capabilities can be.
For more than 100 years, Oklahoma's own Griffin Communications has been committed to Oklahoma. From feeding the troops through two world wars, to the early days of television, the first television radar, and the first live broadcast of a tornado, Griffin has been there. And our mission of keeping Oklahomans safe, informed, and entertained is even more relevant today. That commitment to Oklahoma will continue in our new home, in the heart of the city and state that we love and serve. The Griffin Communications Media Center will house not only the number-one news station in the city, News 9, but also Griffin's outdoor, digital, radio network, and corporate headquarters. By moving more than 200 high-quality jobs into the city's core, Griffin will immediately make an impact on downtown. We envision being an active and involved member of this vibrant community and bringing all the excitement and progress of downtown to our viewers' homes every day. The possibilities are limitless. Live broadcasts from outside News 9's studio, during events like the Festival of the Arts and Thunder Home Games, David Payne leading weather safety talks at the myriad botanical gardens, or our weekend morning newscasts going live from the farmer's market in Scissor Tail Park. And our employees will take part in all that downtown has to offer, dining out, shopping, and exploring their new work home every day. Additionally, Griffin is working with the Inasmuch Foundation, University of Oklahoma, and others to explore the creation of a world-class media space inside the Griffin Communications Media Center. The Media Innovation Collective, the MIC, would be a central hub for nonprofit and for-profit media organizations and individuals where they can share resources to cover critical issues facing the state. The innovative shared space would be the first of its kind in the state for media and journalists, and include conference rooms, a multimedia studio, state-of-the-art fiber optics, and the latest in broadcasting technology. Oklahoma City and the downtown area's outlook is incredibly bright, and we look forward to being a part of it. We will bring jobs, coverage, and resources to the city that will help it flourish years to come. Thank you for your consideration of this project and for being willing to make this exciting move possible, as Griffin Communications at News 9, the only locally-owned station, begins a new era in the heart of the city.
So, what do we, so what do we hope to build? Thriving home for the Griffin Companies, which will last, hopefully, well beyond me. Our company is over 110 years old, and I'm looking, I'm looking to ensure its future well past my lifetime. We also are really excited about the MIC, the Media Innovation Collective, where we can bring nonprofit journalists and students together in an innovative collaborative space to learn about journalism and report on things in our community. Ultimately, what we want is a building that today stands mostly empty. Turn it into one with our 200-plus employees, a newspaper. We successfully negotiated with Gannett to move the newspaper to a smaller space, so there's 70 employees. And then students and nonprofit journalists. So, you take a building that is today mostly empty into a thriving part of the Oklahoma City. It is Main Street of Oklahoma. Additionally, we want to make sure that the current tenants, the YMCA, doctors' offices, and restaurants are all part of this and part of a healthy building. We think these are really important, and I think it's one of the reasons why our employees are so excited about moving downtown with all these amenities. I do have some slides to show you, some of the renderings that we have. There's all our companies that will be joining us. There's the exterior we're planning. There's a potential look at a thriving newsroom. Newsset is located there. Weatherset, obviously, weather's real important for us. Sports, that's the city skyline. Those are all video monitors that we'll be putting in, so those will change with the season and as Oklahoma City grows. Again, another look at night. Breaking news morning show set. And there's another set, probably for an early evening newscast. That is David Payne's, he does have hair in that picture, so he appreciated that.
Hey, David, is any of that visible to the street, just out of curiosity?
Pardon, pardon, Mayor.
Is any of the set visible to the street? I was just curious.
Yeah, you know, we've talked a lot about that. In some communities, you have that, but we kind of feel comfortable, we can create the look and the feel of downtown without having it there. There is a Studio B, which we will have opportunities, and we want to do some things outside where we can bring it in, so it's not contemplated this time. we can bring it in, so it's not contemplated this time. The timeline we have, we closed, we actually closed yesterday on the transaction. The, we'll be in the design phase, which, and then we have the first, the goal of building out, actually moving in around July 1 of next year. Sure.
So, the incentive proposal is $2.7 million, as I mentioned earlier. $2 million would be funded from TIF VIII, that's the Devon Headquarters TIF. In that TIF district, the project plan that was approved by City Council set out a budget category called "Other Economic Developments," and that was, that was defined in the TIF project plan as funding that was to be used to attract other companies to downtown Oklahoma City, even companies that were already located within the city limits. So, that $2 million in this allocation is actually funded by the property taxes that are paid by Devon Energy and not by the ones that will be paid by Griffin Communications. The other $700,000 is tied to the capital investment that they will be making. They will be purchasing the building for approximately 15 and a half million. They also plan to make about $3.4 million in remodeling and retrofitting the space and another $7.1 million in furniture fixtures and equipment, new technology equipment, new broadcast equipment to finish out the space. They plan to relocate 195 jobs that pay just a little bit over $100,000 a year. And as David mentioned, they do plan on negotiating a new lease with Gannett to keep the Oklahoman in the building, so I know that's been a question from a lot of people.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Are you done?
No. We're all, I'm happy to take anyone's questions, yes.
I was just going to say, you know, the, the idea you, you claim I should take credit for was really yours first, and you alluded to that, and that was the, the energy that you guys brought to downtown Tulsa, and I wanted to see that here. And thank you for exploring that over the course of many months and through a pandemic, and, and of course, our original conversations had no relation to this building, and the fact that that ultimately emerged as a solution just was an extra benefit because this building has the potential to become a little less used, and it's pretty well-positioned in our downtown, and it needs to have the kind of life that you're going to bring. So, this, this for me personally checks a lot of boxes, and I really want to commend Kathy's persistence in making this happen, because she was critical to it as well, and then also mentioned Martin Moore and his team and their willingness to, to make this happen. And I know this was very complicated, but in the end, it brings a lot of life to downtown Oklahoma City, a new energy, a new thing that we, we haven't had here in a long time, which is this type of broadcast media right downtown, and it's all the things you said, and you should have a slick video, obviously, that would have been amiss if you hadn't brought a, a good video. So, thank you for, for bringing this forward and for being a good citizen of this city.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Questions and comments from the council?
Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, thank you for the presentation. I know you and I have talked previously, and this is, your station where you are now is not far from my neighborhood. This is truly going to be amiss for us in my neighborhood to not see the, the cars ride by quickly going to a story, because then we know something's happening. So, my question, if, if possible, can you tell the public what's going to happen with the space after you leave?
Yes, thank you. As we discussed, the, the ideal circumstance from my perspective would be to take our existing building, which is on the corner of Kelly and Wilshire, where we've been for seven years, is to make a contribution to OETA and gift that building, and probably more important for them, the equipment in that building to OETA. Now, we have had, I believe it was last week or the week before last, OETA came over and looked at the building. They want to get an understanding of what the type of equipment and everything that we have, but we're in discussions with them, so that is the ideal state for me. We're also talking, it's more building than what OETA would need, so we're in, we're starting to have some conversations and some ideas about other nonprofit groups that could potentially use that space. But we, we want that building to still be utilized there. Your neighbors, actually, your neighbors will be very glad because we're moving our helicopter. We're not a very good neighbor with regard to being very loud, so the helicopter will be moving not to downtown Oklahoma City, but moving to, to an airport where it's probably, it's probably better off. So, I think your, your neighbors will be very happy with us moving part, that, that piece of machinery out of there.
Thank you.
David?
Mr. Griffin, I got to sit through a similar presentation about six years ago. Very, very similar in terms of the newspaper wanting to relocate.
Sure.
Downtown. I'm more optimistic, more knowledgeable now about issues like this, and I have more confidence that yours will be more successful from a long-term perspective. I don't think the city is interested in just seeing companies move to downtown and then dissipate or dry up.
I'm not interested in that either.
Yes, sir. And again, like I said, I've got confidence, I, I've known about your company for many years, and it's, it's, it's truly a great corporate citizen for the state and, and the city, and has performed exceedingly well. And the reason for that confidence is the local ownership. I think in media, especially, the, the fact that there is a local ownership has a very positive impact on, I'm going to use the word customers. If we were talking about a newspaper, we might use the term subscribers or people that want to participate with you. But again, like I said, six years ago, we sat through a very similar presentation without the video and heard that this would be great for the downtown area, and I think a significant part of their problem was the change in ownership, greater outside influence, more of a corporate perspective, and, you know, it's, it's even been said that they abandoned their core subscriber base, and that leads to less subscriptions, that leads to less advertising, that leads to less jobs. So, I just wanted to say, I've been through this, I have greater confidence in the success of your organization, and I'm looking forward to that. But Kathy, is there any kind of a clawback provision in, in this agreement?
So, we haven't, we haven't negotiated an economic development agreement with Griffin Communications as of this time, because the TIF allocation has not been approved, but assuming that it is, there would be, there would be a clawback provision as a part of the $2 million allocation, similar to what we did with Opubco, and there would also be a minimum tax payment associated with the $700,000 in TIF II.
Well, and sometimes I have to apologize for bringing out those kinds of issues, but in my role, I think it's, it's, it's important to at least address those issues. Thank you again, and, and good luck, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing your station relocate and the success that you'll have.
Thank you, and I'm glad you brought that up, because, you know, you, I look at our company today, and, and people sometimes lump us with a more struggling industry, which is the newspaper industry. Our company is diverse, we have diverse revenue streams, digital, outdoor, and, and other streams, so considered a very healthy company. It's my personal responsibility to make sure it stays healthy and to make sure that we stay a part of a thriving community. So, thank you for bringing that up.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And finally, CK.
Yes, on CK, Brooke Honer is here with the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce to introduce our next speakers on this proposed allocation of gold funds.
Thank you, City Manager. Good morning, Mayor Holt and Council. I'm Brooke Honer, Project Manager on the Business Attraction Team in the Economic Development Division of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber. We have been working directly with Signify Health's corporate team for the past five or so months as they've searched to identify a market to locate their new member engagement call center, and we are very thrilled at their decision to locate these jobs in Oklahoma City. To share more about what they're looking to do in Oklahoma City, I'm pleased to introduce Nancy Reyes, Member Engagement Vendor Manager with Signify. Good morning, everyone. I'm a little short, so sorry about that. So, my name is Nancy Reyes, and I am here presenting on behalf of Signify Health. And to begin, of course, I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to be part of this incredible program, so I'd like to go ahead and jump in. So, Signify Health was actually founded in 2017, and we are a leader in the value-based care. We know that healthcare costs are rising at an incredible rate, and that change is needed in this space. Through the use of our technology platform and nationwide clinician network, our goal is to drive both cost and quality improvements while helping individuals stay healthy in the comfort of their own home. And at the end of the day, that is why we exist, to help give people more healthy, happy days at home. At Signify Health, we are proud to be one of the nation's largest players in this space and have a large network of health plans and systems that partner with us to change the way that care is delivered. Not only do we have over 2,000 employees, but our nationwide clinician network of 9,000 strong allows us to engage with individuals across the country and bring care into one's home when and where it's needed. Thankfully, we continue to grow our business and are looking at opportunities that fit our expansion, hence the reason for our visit today. And initially, we estimate hiring around 225 employees within the first two years, but we are hoping for expansion past that point in the years thereafter. So, we envision around 25 management and support personnel, and the remaining 200 will be the frontline call center professionals. We have a great benefits program that starts the first day of the month following their start date. And then, of course, why Oklahoma City? So, Oklahoma City is honestly a wonderful location to expand the Signify footprint. The local and state incentive programs are excellent, and there is a large and qualified workforce here in Oklahoma City that we think fits our model for excellence, and geographically and strategically, the city is a great fit. In addition, we think this would be a company and an employment opportunity that local individuals would be proud to be a part of. We are working with insurance companies and changing people's lives on a daily basis, and to me, that mission is something that will resonate within your communities. As of today, we are still looking at real estate options here in Oklahoma City while conducting similar diligence in other Texas cities. All right, and finally, we are now a public company and continue to grow and mature as an organization, and we have renewed our focus on volunteer and partnership opportunities with the local communities, and we view Oklahoma City market no different. We believe that expanding our footprint in Oklahoma City will be mutually beneficial to both Signify Health and the city and its constituents, and we look forward to this long-term partnership. Thank you. And I'll leave it open for questions, if any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that is all the items that we had on the consent docket for presentations or discussions. We could take a motion now to adopt the entire consent docket, save the two items that were previously voted on and adopted. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And just as a notice, anybody watching, several of those things we just had presentations on, all of them actually regarding economic development and incentives are actually just being introduced, and there's a final consideration on all of them on August 17. All right, now we are moving forward to the concurrence docket, item 10, and we can take items A through K with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11, items requiring separate votes. Item 11A is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval. This is at 8200 Southwest 74th Street going from I-2 to R-2. Councilwoman Young.
Mr. Mayor, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We do not.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11B, this is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 9101 North Overholser Drive going from AA to RA, single-family one-acre rural residential. Councilman Cooper. I'm sorry, Carter.
Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We do not.
Then I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11C is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 11701 Southwest 29th going from AA to R-1. Councilwoman Young.
Anybody signed up to speak?
Nope.
All right. Motion to approve. Thank you.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Item 11D was previously deferred, so item 11E is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval at 10801 Old Four Highway going from I-2 to PUD 1820. This was deferred from July 20, and we do have some people who have signed up to speak. Councilman Carter.
Okay. Who?
Well, there's quite a few. Maybe we should start with the applicant. You want to go there, and then we'll, we'll handle the respondents.
Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who's also here with us, Mr. David Seiler, as well as Mark Grubbs, who's the civil engineer for this project. This is an item that was deferred from two weeks ago to allow a, a neighborhood meeting to take place. This item is an application that would allow for a manufactured home development, and when we went through Planning Commission, it was recommended for approval unanimously by Planning Commission. Staff recommends approval of this, and I'm going to talk about why that is in a moment, but I wanted to show you some of the images of the product that will be built here. And the reason that I make the distinction and say a manufactured home versus a trailer home will be important in a moment when my client gets up to discuss it. Being placed on this docket, I think, ended up being a positive. There's been a significant talk this morning about affordable housing and what that means. I had a, an issue with my family that did not allow me to go to the neighborhood meeting last night, but what I am told from my engineer and my client, that frankly, some of the comments made from neighbors were, were quite offensive, frankly, fairly troubling, because the entirety of the almost two-hour meeting dealt with the type of person that was going to be living within this development. This is a single-family residential. It's a single-family residential in perhaps a different form than a home built on-site. This is a home that is built in a factory and brought to the site, but it, make no mistake, this is a single-family next to a single-family. Some of the things we heard were, this is going to be a safe haven for pedophiles. This is going to be a safe haven for drug addicts. Perhaps the most offensive comment that my engineer relayed to me was, and I quote, "We have what they want, and they will come take it." So, this is not a case about appropriate use. Unfortunately, this has become a case about a type of person that is going to live in a home. I would submit to you, that is just absolutely not something for this city council to consider in their deliberations. In fact, to the contrary, look no further than Plan OKC as it relates to whether or not this product that we intend to bring through PUD 1820 is a not this product that we intend to bring through PUD 1820 is appropriate. If we start on the executive summary under big ideas, the second big idea called out in Plan OKC, increase housing choice and diversity for all lifestyles. In fact, Plan OKC has an entire section entitled Live OKC in which it walks through policies, ideas, and methods to meet those big ideas. Under Housing, at page 211, Housing Choice says, "The housing market preference and demand and community appearance studies both indicated a growing demand for more diverse types of housing." Then what Plan OKC does in various initiatives, starting at Initiative 4, "We will create public and private partnerships that will fill critical demands like workforce housing that are not normally satisfied. Information must be put to use. The 2013 study identified a major demand for workforce housing." Initiative 5, "Diversify the housing supply by type and cost. We will create forces that produce housing diversity through implementation of land use plan. The land use plan is built on the principle of mixing uses and densities, and greater housing variety is beneficial outcome for this new approach." And finally, when we get to the action items for Live OKC, it tells us that Policy L-12, "Modify codes and/or regulations to create opportunities for more income diversity, mixed-income neighborhoods by allowing a variety of housing ownership and leasing arrangements, diverse housing sizes and types, including manufactured slash modular housing." That's exactly what this product is. The Planning Commission was unanimous in their recommendation for approval. The things we heard last night and have heard through emails since this item came before council deals with a fear of a type of person, a fear that is unsubstantiated that property values will be diminished because of the type of home that will be here. People were very proud to tell us how much they spent on their home and what this type of person may do to their home values. I would submit that there's absolutely no evidence in the record, and frankly, that exists in the marketplace that would be able to be presented at this podium or in a courtroom that would substantiate the claims that this product is going to diminish property values. There is not a single home within 820 feet of our northern line. Now, there is some homes perhaps planned to be built there. What my client was willing to do last night at the meeting that didn't seem to move the needle was build an eight-foot concrete wall. I don't think he should have to do that. In planning principles, that's often viewed as a spite wall. They want to simply keep our people out and keep their people in, but in the interest of trying to make a concession, he was willing to do an eight-foot concrete wall. You'll notice in your staff report, there was a recommendation for approval without the need for an eight-foot concrete wall. So I want to turn it over briefly to Mr. Seiler to walk through what it means to be a manufactured home and what the product is that he intends to bring to market.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor Holt. My name is David Seiler. I'm an Oklahoman. I've been in the manufactured home industry in Oklahoma City and in the state of Oklahoma for 30 years. My life goal and mission has been to provide affordable, safe, clean environments for, you know, the Oklahoma workforce. Today, the culmination of this is hopefully going to, you know, be at your all's hands, and I look for, you know, a favorable vote. The goal and the dream that I've got is that over the last four or five years, we have seen developments in, they're brand-new developments, as the one that I'm proposing today, in Austin, Texas, San Antonio, that are very high-quality. They are very attractive. They blend with all the other neighborhoods and the environments around them, and so we are ready to put our money where our mouth is, okay? We are going to bring in new two-, three-, and four-bedroom, factory-built homes. What's a factory-built home? It's not our grandpa's trailer. A factory-built home nowadays is a home that is built in a factory at the most economical, efficient way, you know? If Ford, if it was the most efficient way to build a car, Ford would build them all on driveways, right? Well, it's not. It's more efficient because of theft, because of waste of material, because of delays in shipping. Factories bring these products in, they do it at a more affordable, higher quality than they used to. What are they? They're sheet rock, tape and texture, they're hardwood cabinets, you know? Our clients, our clients are teachers, they're firemen, they're retirees, they're single-moms, single-dads. They're not the stereotypical that everybody wants to put the ceiling and the cap on, you know, the stereotypical product. The thing that I want to do is I want to bring what Texas is doing, I want to bring it to Oklahoma City, and I want to show the staff that we can do a product that you guys are proud of, that you guys have been part of. I mean, look at some of these pictures, you know, the, you know, the clubhouse, that these are all entries, you know, the products, the outside, they're all landscaped, they're presentable, they look nice. They're things that none of us would shy away from, none of us would be embarrassed about living in. It's, you know, I sat up here and I listened to you guys, every, well, most of you guys all talked about affordable housing, workforce housing. This is the answer in a very clean, structured environment, and it doesn't create a rub on the environment or on the neighborhood communities. What, it does, it does the complete opposite of that. We've got a, we've got a neighborhood of manufactured housing that is over on Southwest 15th in Oklahoma City. We're surrounded on four sides of new site-built homes. Not a one of them has ever had a problem with our community. Our community was there first, and it built around there, and we're part of that neighborhood, just like you guys would want us to be. I would take questions if there's any.
We do have, pardon me, and I actually kind of overspoke. There's only two people who signed up to speak in protest, and we do have those folks. Do we want to do Q and A with them first, or do we want to go to your protesters? Okay, all right. Looked like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, thank you. A question. So are the lot sizes for this development similar to a regular, single-family house lot? 6,000 feet or whatever?
They're slightly smaller, but they're the same in terms of scale.
Okay. Does each lot have its own separate driveway?
Yes, three-car parking. There'll be city water, city sewer, city garbage. We're even, you know, contemplating putting in a gate to offer these clients some safety feel.
Sure. No, you're, these newer homes are very attractive, in my opinion, but here's the final question. Do you provide, because there is a concern in terms of tornadoes and when tornadoes come through this area, do you have like a group storm shelter? Or I guess with the lot sizes like they are, they're, each home could accommodate and build its own storm shelter.
Our experience has been that the customers, that the homeowners that have wanted a storm shelter, we've allowed them, not only the space, but the ability to put a storm shelter in on their lot.
And they can even do it in their driveway if they choose to.
So in terms of lot size, it's similar to what is becoming a popular lot size through the R-1ZL district. It's an almost identical lot size to that, and so there's ample room for storm shelters.
Thank you.
But another add-on that I'd like to present to you guys as well is that a large portion of what these new factory-built communities provide is a professionally-trained management crew and maintenance crew, okay? And so although it's privately owned and held, it is, it is something that is, it's got, it's got people on-site every day that live amongst the community, and they know how to maintain and how to manage the process and the customer correctly.
Mr. Box, I was a part of that meeting last night, and the references that you brought up, out of a two-hour meeting totaled a couple, not the entirety of the meeting, and it was not the basis for that meeting or the discussion. The property value was, the investment of the developers and the potential loss that they have, the aspects of where your client's line draws to the north, the property above that has now already gone through our planning and our zoning commission, and the buffer that was instated is no longer there, and it has been approved. So the concern from the citizens, which I have over 100 different emails, I have been contacted by the superintendent and a school board member of Yukon Public Schools, they're concerned with the overcrowding and the flooding and potential aspects that's going to do to their school system, because we are in a Yukon address, even though it's annexed to Oklahoma City. Yukon doesn't allow for manufactured homes. So this was a shock to everyone whenever our planning and our zoning commission even considered it. The school system has no issue with the recent development even around there, because it takes two to three years for them to start to build those structures up and phase things in. With manufactured home center, you get everything plotted, you get everything plowed down, these homes can be flooded, and we're looking at 246 homes, I believe, that would be almost instantly put in within at least a year.
We've got backlog currently of over a year of the month from the factories.
There's over a year backlog just from the factories to get one of these, is what Mr. Seiler said.
And that year you're going to use to get the land plotted, get it set out and cleared out and ready to go.
Yes, sir.
So I mean, you've already, we would have already placed the order by that point in time, so you would have known what you're getting into. That doesn't give the school systems that appropriate time either. So with this, I mean, there is a number of different arguments and complaints from the people that it's going to truly matter to. Do you have anything to say to me about that side of it and that conversation that we had last night, because that wasn't derogatory?
Well, again, and I wasn't there, I've read the emails. Lots of the emails deal with accusations of crime, pedophiles, and a type of person.
Well, statistics do show that, but that's not something that we get to show this aspect of it. Our Southwest Division shows that they get 30 calls a month at one of Mr. Seiler's mobile home parks right now, which is just a few miles up the road. I drove through that mobile home park myself last night, and it does not look stellar, and that picture that you showed up doesn't represent anything that's in that property. So my concern is this is all fluff.
Well, I would disagree that the statistics show what the neighbors are concerned about. In terms of to the north, the comment was made that to the north has been approved, and there isn't a 200-foot separation. There are two large ponds immediately to our north that you can see on this. So there couldn't be anything built within the first...
So that preliminary plot that showed is no longer valid.
Right.
They filed a final plot that was all the way to the north.
Correct. So you have the ponds, and you've got, I understand that there's a phase, but that's also why my client said he was willing to build an eight-foot concrete wall.
Would you like to see it?
Yeah, no, I've seen it, but what I'm saying is, I still think there's separation. There's an eight-foot concrete wall that he's willing to do, if that was a concern. And the sense that they got, the sense that I got from reading the emails, was I don't know that there's anything in the development of this in terms of objective standards and setbacks that would make the neighbors comfortable based upon the perceived threat that they have.
Reread that, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Yeah, so based upon what I understand, how the meeting went, all of the emails that I've read, I don't think there's something that, in the confines of what we typically consider is a zoning case, setbacks, buffers, walls, I don't think there's anything objective that could be placed into this PUD that would satisfy the concerns that have been raised by the neighbors, based upon the concerns being what they are, the statistics.
The property value, the statistics, the school overcrowding.
Well, and in terms of property value, so we pulled the MLS, and not that it has any relevance to this discussion, but the numbers that they cited, that I've been told, are frankly just not right. The MLS reflects house sales from 250 to about 360, which I'm not making any observation about that at all, but the consistent theme was, we've spent too much money to be living next to what they kept calling a trailer park. That's not what the MLS reflects. And what we're really talking about is...
You don't think $250,000 is a lot of money?
Of course it is. I said I'm not making an opinion on that. What they are saying is a bigger number as to why they're justified in their fear of what these are. What I'm saying is, this is single-family next to single-family. It's just a different form of single-family, but it's single-family residential next to single-family residential. It would be unique for there to be a significant buffer. Typically in buffers and setbacks, we're dealing with commercial or industrial or a non-residential use, or even maybe multifamily, but a non-residential use next to single-family. Here, it's single-family next to single-family. And currently built, the closest home is 820 feet away. And so I, you know, I understand, we just respectfully disagree with the concerns raised by the neighbors. I do not believe property value will be impacted. There's certainly nothing in the record to substantiate that.
It's because we haven't built a manufactured home in Oklahoma City in over 23 years.
Okay.
So we have nothing to go by on that side of it, correct?
Sure. Well, I guess, other than, as Mr. Seiler said, one of his other developments, single-family is actually built around it, so they've actually come to...
Those are actually affordable housing. Those are $100,000, $120,000 homes that were built around his site down off of 15th and Chancal.
Sure.
So we're not comparing apples to apples.
Well, again, I understand, I just respectfully disagree, because I believe this is single-family next to single-family, and the cost that someone pays versus the cost, you know, that the people on the other side of the wall are going to pay, I don't believe to be a relevant factor in the zoning decision.
Okay. I'd like to hear from you.
May I ask a question? To the gentleman who's bringing this development, can you give me a community? You mentioned Texas, and I'm trying to Google just some manufactured home communities, because I haven't personally seen one, so can you give me an example of one?
Yeah, they've got a really great website. It's called RobertsCommunities.com. If you pull it up, you'll see that they've got about six or seven just beautiful communities that, we want to emulate at least one of them.
Roberts Communities?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I believe that's exactly the way it comes out. Yeah, Roberts with an S, Communities.
Okay, well, you want to get to the two people who signed up to speak? Craig and Karen Horton in Yawken. Come in whatever order you wish. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
I can't hear you.
State your name and address.
Oh, my name is Craig Horton. Anything else?
Your address?
Oh, 11025 Northwest 21st Street in Yukon.
Go ahead.
This was all very interesting, listening to these guys, but let me tell you, if this was such a great idea, there wouldn't be a moratorium against new mobile home parks in Yukon, Edmund, and Mustang. If you will travel down the road on Northwest 10th Street to Mr. Seiler's so-called beautiful addition, it is horrible. I wish that I could have known, I could have brought pictures. I would have brought pictures today. It's not a good idea. Also, the congestion, the traffic congestion in that area, you have an exit off of the Kilpatrick, you have a two-lane road, Sarah Road, you have old Highway 4 that is rutted coming into the same area across from the DeLeese Plant, across from two different railroad crossings within 100 yards. All those things I mentioned are within 100 yards. So it is a congestion problem to the utmost degree. Oftentimes, the railroad blocks Sarah, and it blocks 10th Street to unload the cement at the DeLeese Park. So you will sit on Sarah, old Highway 4 and 10th Street, I always turn around after 15, 20 minutes. So it is not a proper thing to do. Also, I contacted the Oklahoma Wildlife Department. They were heartbroken that these people are going to destroy 51 acres of wildlife area. This area is covered in trees, we have deer, we have wild turkey, squirrels, and all kinds of birds. Sunday, this Sunday, on the way to church, I had to stop on Sarah Road at this area and allow a fawn to cross the road. So this area is not a good place to be torn down. Also, last night at the meeting, you've heard lots of this, the people in that meeting were very concerned about their area. We asked the people present, these men here behind me, if they would want a motorhome park... park in their neighborhood. They said no. They wouldn't move there, they wouldn't live there, they wouldn't buy a house there. So why should we have one? I asked them also what they love most. Do they care more about the people in this building, in this room tonight talking, or do they care more about money? They wouldn't answer. I think you know the answer. So I'm asking you, panel, to vote no on this situation. I also talked to the Oklahoma City Police. There were over 30 calls to his ideal neighborhood that they had to report to. A citizen who lives just east of his development said, when they call the police, the police dispatcher answers, "We can't get there." Well, we can take a phone report, but you'll have to just take care of it yourself. That is from a school board member. I also talked to the school board members of Yukon. I was employed by Yukon Schools for 34 years as teacher, coach, administrator, counselor. I know these people. I know when the development that Mr. Seiler owns, when it moved in, our academics went down, our discipline referrals went up. It's not the place we want in that area. Also, we've tried to call to the east of there, the people that live there, they've tried to call the Canadian County Sheriff. We have one deputy in that area that cannot get there. So I'm imploring and asking you, counsel, to deny this proposal. We don't want this, we don't want it in our neighborhood, and if it was such a great idea, like I said, why would Mustang, Yukon, and Edmond not allow any new parks? If you'd like, I wish, like I said, if I could have brought you pictures today of his so-called awesome place, it's not awesome. As an administrator in Yukon Schools, I would not go in that, his neighborhood, I would not go in there at night if I was armed. Every referral, not every referral, but most of the referrals that I had for discipline, sex abuse, spousal abuse, came from this utopian neighborhood. We don't want that close to our house. Please vote no on this proposal to change this. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, do you wish to speak as well? Please come forward.
My name is Karen Horton, and I'm married to Craig, I live at the same address, 11025 Northwest 21st Street. Everything that has been said here, Craig said it well, I appreciate your comments, and I thank you all for listening to us. Please take this to heart. The only thing I would like to add is that last night, when we were trying to ask questions, we got some non-answers, we got some half-answers, we got some answers. He did say that he was involved in putting that place, it's called Welcome Home, and he still has interest in it, and it hasn't been cleaned up or anything, so, thank you. Please vote not to rezone this, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Carter, can I ask Kenny, I want to kind of ask Kenny Jordan, if I might, kind of a first principles question. I mean, you start in the state of nature where everyone can do with their property as they wish, and then 100 years ago, a major Supreme Court case really opened the door for zoning and the idea that we as a society would limit the ability of property owners to do whatever they wish. And for 100 years, state and local governments have defined by what grounds we can make those kinds of decisions. I guess what I'm a little challenged by, Kenny, as I hear all this, is what that has been presented, that you've heard, seems to fall within the kinds of grounds where we can make those decisions? Because I know there are some things that really can't be considered. Mark, you're welcome to take it as well.
No, all I'm saying is, before we have this discussion, my preference would be to do it in an executive session, because...
We can't do that. We can't do that.
Well, you can, I think you can, because we're seeking the advice of counsel, and this could potentially be appealed to the district court, and we're making a record at the horseshoe when some of us may want legal advice as to Kenny's position on all this. I think you can.
But we wouldn't be the party... Go ahead, Kenny.
We could have small group meetings and discuss it. Is this on?
But Kenny, if this were, if we ruled one way or the other, I mean, we voted one way or the other, and they went to court, I mean, we're not a party to that case, I mean, we're...
Yes, if it's denied.
Okay, so Mark is saying that, I've just never heard what Mark's saying before in my 15 years around City Hall, that we can't discuss a planning case in public. I would think that's highly...
No, you can definitely discuss any planning case in public.
We can discuss them, the only exception I'd make is where I would like to get some legal advice and have it protected by the attorney-client privilege. And I think we're entitled to do that at any time, if the council votes to go into executive session, and then have a conversation with their lawyer.
But we don't have executive session on this agenda for this item, so we would have to defer the item to do that.
The best way to do it is the small group meetings, and I mean, if David stands up there and says if it's denied, he's going to sue us, we have a potential lawsuit there that you could go into executive session on that. But of the factors brought up, definitely according to the state statute on zoning factors and objectives for zoning regulations that you can look at, you can look at property values, how property values will be impacted by either a zoning regulation or a rezoning decision. You can look at that, that's specifically in the statute. In terms of the presumed criminal conduct of persons who are going to be living in the homes, I would have to just consult some type of an expert on that, who, I've never heard of that being a factor before. You really can't necessarily presume that the people that are going to live here are going to commit crimes. And also, the people who are going to live there, it's really not relevant to a land use decision. But property values are relevant. You have to have expert witnesses. Yes, you have to have the expert testimony. So you can either have it here, or if it's denied, you have it in district court. But you have to have a real estate agent who is an expert, who would testify that this development here will impact the ability of the surrounding properties that sell their homes. You would have to have a MIA appraiser who would say, this development will devalue the properties surrounding it. So property values can be relevant.
I guess my question to this, hearing this conversation, is there an option to defer for that particular reason? Because I honestly want to make a very sound decision on this, if you're okay with that, Councilman.
Oh, I'm very okay with it. So I move for...
I think we're presuming that we're reading your words and your body language, that you're not leaning towards approval. So if that's the case, I would concur with the hope that we can defer.
No, I move for referral.
Okay.
May I also add, as we head into whatever conversations we're going to have, where we're gaining information, like Counselwoman Nice, I didn't know what a factory, community-built home, I didn't know what that would look like, so I just started Google, just no bias, just typed in the words I was hearing, and Market Watch comes up. Quote, "Many have long held the assumption that mobile homes don't increase in value, or at the very least, they rise in value at a much slower rate than traditional homes. But recent data suggests the opposite is true, and that could have major implications in the push for increased affordable housing nationwide." So any information we can get that helps us understand, tangible data when it comes to, I'm just quoting Market Watch, which is a very reliable source, I'm going to need that for this decision, because let me just say this, while I'm inclined, you know, listening to a fellow council member's perspective on what their, the needs of their ward, as someone who is biracial, as someone who is gay, who has literally heard words like pedophile and criminal used to define me, uh-uh, I'm not okay with that. And also, as you all just heard me say earlier about my student, my middle school student, I just said to you all, and I've argued passionately for years, they are not delinquent, they are not discipline problems, they are students with backstories that we need to do everything we can to intervene in their lives, to make sure that they are on a path of success and thriving. So I'm never here for language like what I've heard today, and so, I need to figure out what the best way to vote is also. Like, this is tough, that's a tough ask you've put in front of us, so I appreciate the deferral approach.
And what I would say is, Kenny threw out a term, MAI-designated appraiser. We have hired one. In the spectrum of appraisers, there's a host of different types. You've got a residential appraiser, you've got what's called a certified general appraiser, and then the rarest of designations is the MAI-designated appraiser. I believe in Oklahoma, there are less than five. It is a master's in the Appraisal Institute, and so we will be able to present data that proves the point that you just found online, through a report as well as testimony from this podium, that from an MAI-appraiser, there is no data to support that there will be a reduction in property values.
Okay, well, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, excuse me, Mayor. And to the point of me looking now at Roberts Communities, if I can get a more defined look at these homes that we are presenting in this neighborhood, instead of what I'm looking at, that would be most helpful as well.
So I'll send Ms. Martin kind of a packet of materials for you and anyone else that wants to review.
One more thing, these crime stats that we're referencing today, specifically regarding the other development and the rates at which officers are able to respond, all those, I'd like to hear some actual data verifying the allegations we heard today, proving one way or the other, but, you know, y'all heard the same things I did, right? I'd like to hear that, I'd like to know...
And I would clarify, too, that a specific location does not affect an officer's ability to respond. I think sometimes that might be the way, what you're calling in or what you're reporting affects how we respond, the priority, it's not an area that's going to define whether we respond.
Thank you, City Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a desire to defer this.
With the ability to put it into executive session on the next agenda.
Yeah, that's the, you can work on that with City Mayor, I guess, in the meantime.
If you're okay with that, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
So, is two weeks enough, Counselor Carter?
I would hope so.
Okay. All right, so that's the motion then. Let's do that virtually. All right, we've got a motion and a second to defer, two weeks. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right. Moving on to 11F, this is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 8524 North Sooner Road, going from AA to PUD 1823. Counselwoman Nice.
Yes, has anyone signed up to speak?
If not.
Okay, I will move for approval.
Getting that brought up? Oh, it's not on my screen, but I would like to vote yes. Passed unanimously. Okay, item G was previously deferred. Item 11H.
I just wanted to clarify on that, that on the video, it lost the motion, the motion was actually, yeah, Counselor Carter made the motion, right, on that deferral? So I just wanted to clarify that, because it didn't show up on the video.
Okay.
I think we're okay.
What are you saying? I never even got it at all.
On the video, it showed the second, but not the motion that came up. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, all righty. 11H, ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 824 Northwest 68, going from R1 to SPD 1308. Counselman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant present, however? I'd love to hear from them, specifically this particular applicant. Good to see you.
Good morning. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. This is a small piece of ground that the ballet, Oklahoma Ballet, picked up. Three houses in the area, and they've actually, since we've made this application, they've picked up a fourth, and they're using it to expand their campus slightly, adding some additional parking. They have been doing some performances there, so they needed more parking than just the parking lot that provided for the practice and parent drop-off. So this is just east of the facility, and we're showing it as a placeholder as parking, but the zoning would allow for some additional uses ancillary to the ballet. It was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission.
So they could actually expand some of their work there at the ballet right now into this area as well?
Yeah, they thought that there may be some breakout studios and things like that as part of this.
And also, let me tell you, it'll come as no surprise, the thing that I like, that, well, first, I'm not always, I'm definitely not a fan of when houses go away, and you also know I'm not a fan of parking lots. If we're going to have parking lots, I appreciate your approach here with the landscaping and really thinking about the aesthetics, and specifically with this part of town that needs all the tender loving care it can get, and I look forward to seeing it, receive it. So with that, I'll move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Passed unanimously. All right, item 11I was previously deferred, so 11J is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 8405 South Pennsylvania Avenue, going from SPUD 301 to SPUD 1321. Counselwoman Greenwell.
Thank you, Mayor. There were no protests, this was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, and so I would move approval, subject to the technical evaluation being accepted in terms of a sidewalk. David, did you need to speak on that?
No, we do.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you. And if you do have any comments, yeah, okay, I move for approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, 11K, this is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on August 17th, final hearing on August 31st. This ordinance change relates, change relates to motor vehicles and traffic, specifically relating to electric-assisted bicycles, and I believe we have a little bit of a presentation.
Melinda McMillan Miller is our interim Parks and Recreation Director, and she's going to give us an update on this. We'd had communications with Counselwoman Hammond, she had brought this issue to our attention, so staff started working on this, and I appreciate Melinda's work on this and with her team, and she's going to give us a presentation on what's being composed here.
Thank you, everyone, and again, thank you for your attention today. Melinda McMillan Miller, interim director for Parks and Recreation. Counselwoman Hammond had brought to us a request to investigate and look into the possibilities of changing the ordinance to reflect the allowance of electric-assisted bicycles. Currently, our ordinance does not allow motorized vehicles on trails, and that was something that we knew that with electric bicycles coming on as a very strong new trend in our recreation industry. It was also requested from residents that we look into how we can hopefully incorporate electric-assisted bicycles onto the trail system. A lot of this precipitated out of House Bill 1265, which was passed in November, that the state of Oklahoma now recognizes electric bicycles to be allowed on state-parked trails. And so as those residents were using them in our state parks, they wanted to be able to legally use them on our city trail system as well. So staff conducted a lot of research and spoke with a lot of different residents and looked at pure cities and counties and municipalities across the country. looked at peer cities and counties and municipalities across the country, and what we really discovered is that a one-size-fits-all approach does not work. But what really was emphasized is just the amount of benefit that electric-assisted bicycles do provide to the community. They do provide people an opportunity who otherwise maybe not be strong enough, or not maybe more senior in age and are not physically able to pedal a bicycle of their own volition, the opportunity to then use an electric-assisted bicycle to access trail systems, even on our city streets as well, utilize those bicycles to give them a much more broad opportunity to experience our recreation, recreational trails that otherwise they couldn't before. It also increases, of course, the health benefits. Anytime someone can get out and physically exercise and be outdoors in our parks and our trails, increases the overall health and wellness of our community. And as all of you on the bench and as ourselves as a Parks and Recreation Department, that is, of course, one of our top priorities and goals. As we conducted this research, we went back through our own advisory committees and commissions within the Parks and Recreation Department. One of our first stops was our Trails Advisory Committee, back on December 13th, to discuss the electric bike issue first. The committee's discussion included a request for staff to continue to do some research and to bring back any progress and updates, and then to create recommendations for what that new ordinance language could look like. So from those various meetings, then, the following ordinance changes were proposed to the Trails Advisory Committee. These changes would modify Chapter 32, Article 1, and it would modify Chapter 32, Article 14, Section 32-493. It's as technical as I'm going to get. This includes new definitions for what a multi-use trail is and a natural trail is. Multi-use trails are paved with a hard surface. Natural trails are just that, they do not have a hard paved surface, they are more just natural material, and the three classifications of e-bikes were also defined. There's a classification 1, classification 2, and classification 3. And if there's any questions about what those are, I'm happy to entertain that. The e-bikes have to meet the manufacturing quality standards, as presumed by the Consumer Product Safety Commission. They will have a permanent label displaying the classification number. They would have a Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 electric bicycles, may be operated wherever bicycles are permitted to be operated, including multi-use trails. Only Class 1 e-bikes would be operated on a natural trail. And of course, any of the classifications can be operated on any trail if it is an ADA mobility device. It is the sole responsibility of the e-bike operator to safely operate that bike. At no time shall a person operate an e-bike at a speed or in a manner that is unsafe or poses a hazard of risk or injury to the operator or persons in the vicinity. No person under 16 is allowed to operate a Class 3 e-bike. No person shall operate a Class 3 e-bike unless the bicycle has a speedometer, and the penalty is a violation of a Class A offense. The Trails Advisory Committee then met on September 11th, where the proposed ordinance language was introduced, and the committee deferred the item requesting a little more time to consider the proposed ordinance. The committee met again December 11th and requested more time, and met again on March 29th and voted 5 to 1 to recommend the approved proposal as written, and then we sent the item to the Parks Commission. The Parks Commission then met on April 21st and reviewed the item and the ordinance recommendation, and requested to defer for more discussion. The Park Commission met May 19th and reviewed the ordinance and changed to not allow Class 1 e-bikes on natural trails. The Commission then voted to approve the ordinance with that change in language with a 7 to 2 vote. So today, we are recommending to the City Council that, to consider the proposed ordinance as drafted by the city staff and as approved by the Trails Advisory Committee, and then we then set the item for a public hearing on August 17th and a final hearing on August 31st. I'm happy to entertain any questions at this time, and also, Stephen Kreis is also here with our legal team, who is huge assistance in helping write this ordinance as it is within the municipal code.
Can you tell me what a Class A offense would be, if this is something that we would pursue?
Yeah, it's last Stephen to come up and explain that.
It's misdemeanor of $500.
I'll say this, being a member of the Trails Advisory Committee, this was, if you ever wanted an exciting conversation, here's one for you, class e-bikes. But at the same time, it helped us all to understand the different classes, and I had assumed, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we were working through the violation as far as the offense. I know that was, if I'm not mistaken, because it has been so long, that was one of the questions that I had raised before pertaining to how this could be enforced in ensuring that we're making sure people can come into compliance before we start issuing those violations or citations.
Absolutely, and we discussed at length about the whole enforcement issue on our trails. We have, our trails, we now are almost up to 100 contiguous miles of trails, almost. We're getting really close, and so it's a great problem to have that we have so many trails and we're really widespread, and we have, a lot of them are in areas that are kind of off the beaten path to give the rider that natural feeling, and so sometimes the enforcement of some of those, our rules of the trails are sometimes difficult to enforce. It just kind of happens to be the nature of the beast sometimes when you're in a really far-off area. But we do know that as any time, our newer enforcement officers who have been on our trails and have run into violations of any way, shape, or form, they always do ask for compliance before they ever go to that length of extension to actually write an offensive ticket.
And I think one of the main reasons we specifically talked about that is because of the presentation that you have to display, what type of bike you are driving, to give those specifics. So I know, you know, clearly, for some, that's not going to be something there, if you're not used to riding them, that that's probably not going to be your first priority to think about.
Absolutely.
So we saved you all the trouble, Councilman Stone, before you got on the Trails Committee, we did have to.
I appreciate that. I wish we would still go back and look at like 10cc gas motors, but it's okay.
Well, I just want to say thank you to all the staff who worked on this. I know it was a long process, but I think it did yield a very thoughtful outcome, and I will say this is, I think, maybe the second social media-initiated proposal that I've been involved in. I was literally just tagged on a Facebook group in the discussion about this, and that's why I didn't, I wanted it to just be under all the general items, because I don't really feel like I'm the sponsor of this. I sort of really just brought it to staff to go through that process that Melinda outlined, because it was such a discussion among a lot of the trail users, and like Melinda had mentioned, just that concern about folks that are using them to, they're not, you know, necessarily joyriding, like going, you know, crazy, sorry, just, you know, really high speeds, they're really using them to have that ability to go farther on rides with folks that maybe they've been losing over time while they're aging, or if they've had some kind of injury or something that they're getting back to, you know, full, full operation. And I do think, you know, it's been a learning process for me, and, you know, with this, it's a newer technology, I guess, in the bicycle world, and so I think this is something that likely will evolve over time as, as the technology changes and as people start to use these maybe more often, and it really always comes down to that issue of conflicts of different trail users, and I know that was much of the discussion that I, was relayed to me from trails and parks, and so I really just appreciate everyone involved having that deliberation and really thinking through it with, you know, all of the factors in mind, but really trying to find a way to, you know, allow for the utilization of this type of bicycle, while also thinking about all of those other users and just trying to balance all the needs. So just want to say thank you to the staff for shepherding this through after over a year or so of trying to navigate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, so the question on the table today is to introduce the ordinance for consideration. It'd be a public hearing and then the final vote in four weeks. Would like to take a motion for purpose of introduction. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 11, thank you, 11L, public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No.
They have not, so we will turn to the resolution found at 11L 2, declaring that the structures are dilapidated. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Like did other public meetings end around the country, and suddenly we can like, our system is running 10 times faster? This is great.
No.
Okay, 11M1, public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those struck at the beginning of the meeting. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
Since they have not, we can look then at 11M2, the resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Barely keep up with Prime Gov now. Wow, passes unanimously. 11N, public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those struck at the beginning of the meeting. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they have not.
Hearing that they have not, we can look at 11N2, the resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Disappointingly slow.
You're right.
Are we winning somebody? What is it? Mark? It was Mark's fault. Passed unanimously. All right, 11O, this is the resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust by the issuance of its tax apportionment refunding bonds and one or more Series, et cetera. We have a presentation.
Yes, Angela Pierce, Assistant Finance Director, is going to give us a quick presentation on this refunding.
Good morning, Angela Pierce, Assistant Finance Director. I'm excited today to bring you some good news about some refunding opportunities that we have with the Economic Development Trust. Just to pause for a moment and remind you, refresh your memories, a refunding is similar to refinancing your home mortgage in a better interest rate environment, and so this can produce savings on interest on the debt over the life. With the resolution that you have before you today, we'll be moving forward with the financing plan, we'll be able to move forward with the underwriter selected from the city's pre-qualified pool, we'll be able to waive competitive bidding, and move forward with executing and delivering the financing documents that are necessary for the transaction. And we ran some updated numbers on this transaction last week, and the results have improved. So we're just shy of 15 million in savings, which is right about 15 and 1/2% over the total transaction. And with that, I would take any questions.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for saving us $15 million. I appreciate your efforts.
You're welcome.
All right, if there's no questions, we could take a motion to adopt the resolution. We have a motion and a second, and this vote requires six votes to incur indebtedness, seven votes to waive competitive bidding. Passed unanimously, and with eight votes, enough for indebtedness and competitive bidding. Now we have 11P. This is a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Oklahoma City Zoological Trust by issuing its sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2021, et cetera. We have a presentation on this as well.
This is a new sales tax, or new revenue bond issue, and Angela's going to present this one as well.
Absolutely, yes. So we're looking at a new money transaction here. This would be 25 million for the zoo trust. The zoo has approved this item at their, I believe, July 28th meeting last week. The, there's a couple of different projects that will be spoken to about here in a minute, but this will all be new capital improvements there at the zoo. The duration of the debt here is 25 years, and I'm excited to turn it over. We have Greg Haney here, he's the chief marketing officer for the zoo, and he's going to speak a little bit to the project side, as that's a little bit more in his wheelhouse.
Good morning. I get the fun job to show you some videos and photos of what the zoo is up to, and hopefully you'll be excited by this as much as I am.
We see Prime Gov.
Yeah, it's not coming through right now.
Sorry about this delay, but I do think you'll be excited once you get a chance to view the video.
So just to give you some context into the Oklahoma City Zoo, it was established in 1902, originally downtown where Wheeler Park is, where the Ferris wheel is currently, and in 1920, it was moved to its current location due to some flooding that had happened. So it was deemed as a safer place in its current location. We're currently implementing a 10-year master plan of capital projects that are designed to drive on four different points. One is to drive attendance and revenue for the zoo to keep us going, enhance animal welfare as habitats are constantly being redesigned for the well-being of the animals in our care, and improve the guest experience, and also replace outdated structures. The location that we've been in now has been now more than 100 years. Recent capital projects include Raptor Ridge, Wetlands Walkway, and Predator Pass, which will be opening up Labor Day weekend, and new capital projects include a new administrative office, Expedition Africa, which is our largest habitat, and also the new sea lion exhibit. So, that said, if you're not familiar with the zoo, if you haven't been, this gives you a lay of the land from a guest map. In the gray area that's portioned out is the current footprint of the construction project we're calling Expedition Africa. In that region are some historically significant buildings. One in particular is the bridge that was built in 1923, the other is the mid-century-designed Pachodorn Building, built in 1953, and also the Island Life Habitat, which was built in 1980, but will be redesigned in a very dramatic fashion. So to better explain this, we have a video that describes us with Dwight Lawson, our executive director.
Hi, I'm Dwight Lawson, Executive Director of the Oklahoma City Zoo and Botanical Garden. And on behalf of everyone here at the OKC Zoo, I'm excited to share news of our latest habitat expansion, Expedition Africa. Our mission is to be Oklahoma's premier destination, connecting people and our world's vanishing wildlife and wild places. To achieve this, we are constantly striving to improve and expand the wildlife habitats throughout the zoo's 110 acres. Recent wildlife habitat improvements include the awe-inspiring Sanctuary Asia, the all-new Wetlands Walkway, the reimagined Raptor Ridge, and the newly expanded habitat for the critically endangered African Impainted Dogs and Cheetah, opening this year, that we're calling Predator Pass. And now we're constructing our most ambitious project to date, Expedition Africa. It is our intent that when visitors experience Expedition Africa, they will feel like they've taken a journey through Africa to see its amazing wildlife and become inspired, like we have, to help them thrive. Expedition Africa will be a transformation of 12 acres right in the heart of the zoo, and feature diverse environments, guest experiences, and unforgettable wildlife. In the savanna habitats, guests will discover wildlife native to these open vistas, including zebra, wildebeest, ostrich, gazelle, meerkats, honey badgers, and our growing family of giraffe. Expedition Africa features a new state-of-the-art giraffe barn, large enough for our expanding family, and also includes indoor viewing areas for guests to see this vulnerable species year-round. In our lush rainforest habitats, visitors will encounter wildlife including ring-tailed lemurs, mantella frogs, African bullfrogs, and cichlid fish. And along the water's edge, we'll have a new home for a flamboyance for a group of lesser flamingos. Expedition Africa will also include a complete reimagining of the historic Pachodorn Building, whose iconic mid-century exterior will be preserved, while the inside is transformed to feature new wildlife exhibits, a children's play zone, a private event space, and a new deck. and a new deck overlooking the giraffe savanna, where guests will be able to feed the giraffe. On behalf of everyone here at the Oklahoma City Zoo, I want to thank our zoo friends, members, our community partners, visitors, and residents of Oklahoma City for their continued support of our mission. We'd like to welcome everyone to experience Expedition Africa when it opens in the spring of 2023. For the latest updates on Expedition Africa and all things zoo-related, visit okczu.org and follow us on social media.
So construction began last week, with a mile of construction fencing being erected in the heart of the zoo two weeks ago. And then on the next couple of slides, we'll fast forward through all. There are no others. Fantastic, perfect. The two other projects, we'll be sharing more publicly about the administrative building and the sea lion habitat.
Thank you.
Put together, we'd be happy to answer any questions about the zoo financing or the projects.
I don't really have a question, but I think Greg, you forgot the most important part, you and Mr. Lawson, that you can have the opportunity to camp out in this area. Oh darn, I let the cat out of the bag, darn. Well, I look forward to hearing the meerkat out of the bag, yes. It's 12, so it's, you know, we're getting delirious. But looking forward to hearing more and as a partner or one of the trust members, it's exciting to see just the revitalization and the attention that our staff at the Oklahoma City Zoo pay to not only this space, but for our residents to be able to come and experience one of these many opportunities that we have. So I would encourage all of you, if you have not been lately, now is the time to take the family to enjoy.
All right. Well, we could adopt the resolution in question to incur the indebtedness. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and keep in mind, we need six affirmative votes to incur indebtedness, seven affirmative votes to waive competitive bidding. And it passes unanimously, and with eight votes, sufficient for both things. So thanks, and certainly pass on to Dwight our gratitude and the whole team there. Okay, item 11 Q is an appeal of FER Waste Services LLC from action of the Oklahoma City Park Commission to deny request to provide statement of no adverse impact to DEQ. I understand there is something of an agreement today between parties to defer this item. And Councilwoman Young will lead us through that.
That's correct. As I understand it as well, Mr. Mayor, all parties that have come to speak on this matter today are in agreement to defer to October 12th, at which time we will hear this matter as well as their special use permit. So I'm moved to defer.
All right. Does anybody wish to? Oh, one of our patented Boxgroves summits here?
Yes. So the dates, David Box, 522 Clark Ward Drive, the dates that Ms. McDermott gave me, if I may, were city council for this item would be, I believe, 11/9?
That's the final hearing? It'll be introduced on 10/12.
Okay, and then just for the record, so Eric, currently the special permit is set for 9/9. We will move to move that item to 9/23 to accommodate Eric's schedule to be at the planning commission.
Thank you, David.
So, planning, for the record, Eric Rose. So Planning Commission will be 23 September, and council will be?
Introduced on 10/12, and final hearing on 11/9.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So just to be clear, so this isn't stated as being a two-meeting cycle on this agenda? Will it?
No, it just?
So we're talking about two different things here.
Right.
Let me clear it up. This item will be heard with the introduction of the special use permit or with the final hearing of the inter?
Our belief was it would be heard at the final hearing, so the same date in which the special permit was on final.
Which would be 11?
I screwed the whole thing up. Let me get it straight. We're going to defer this item to 11/9 with the final hearing of the special use permit.
All right. Okay, so the motion is to defer item 11 Q to November 9th. We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes as soon as you can.
Thank you.
Referral passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, 11 R one. This is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Regent Pyle. I don't believe we need executive session. We can take a motion for the resolution. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, item 11 S one. This is a resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to contest judgment without admitting liability in the case of Anthony Maricello v. City of OKC. Executive session has not been requested by staff. So we can take a motion on this. We held up. The afternoon meetings have started in New York, and we're, okay. How held up do we seem to be? Do we need to do it verbally? All right, why don't we just start verbally? See how that goes. Okay, so who wants to make a motion? Remember how to do that?
Seconded.
All right, motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Stone.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Nice.
Yes.
Councilmember Stone Cypher.
Yes, please.
Mayor Holt.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay. Now we are on item 11 T. This is to go into executive session on advice of the municipal councillor to receive confidential communications from its attorney, considering the case of Robert Miller Jr. v. City of OKC. So we need a vote to go into executive session. And, oh, exciting, okay, very good. We can do this virtually. We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll handle that at the conclusion of our other business. 11 U one, we have a claim recommended for denial. Executive session is not requested. We can do a motion on this. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 11 V, claims recommended for approval. We have items A through C. We can take with one motion. Executive session has not been requested. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, we're now at item 12. I've got to step away for a shine luncheon. I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Nice, and she will close this out.
All right, item 12 is items from council, so we will start at the beginning. Ward one?
Not today, thank you.
Ward two?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. First, I wanted to thank Melinda for taking me on a tour of Northwest Optimist. It's so cool seeing young people attending theater camp and writing and producing plays and acting. And that was really great to know that Ward two has such facilities. So I'm sending lots of love to those students and their families. And again, that's Northwest Optimist, just off of Grand and May Avenue. Also wanted to say thank you to the Pride Alliance for, remember the Pride Parade found itself canceled due to the rain, even though the festival continued. And so on Saturday, they actually had the rescheduled festival. The Thunder was in it, Representative Marie Turner. I walked alongside, walked in the parade, which was really cool. First time I've done it alongside a boyfriend, so that was neat. And it was so cool seeing downtown host the very first Pride Parade. I think that was really neat. Want to say again, please, if your schedule permits, speaking of festivals, the Paseo Arts Festival, which we heard at the start of today's meeting, that will be on September 4th, which is a Saturday, through that Monday, September 6th. And I would really encourage everyone to make your way down to the Paseo for that festival, not just because, and safely, should you do so. But a street enhancement project is coming to Paseo within the next year to two. And I think it might be worth everyone's time to kind of lay eyes on what the Paseo looks like at present as it undergoes that placemaking improvement. I also wanted to say thank you to OKCPD for hosting me for their mental health training session last week. That was a very helpful exercise, as you heard me say earlier during council. I'm very much looking forward to seeing the final recommendations from the working group and the consultant as it relates to the six different public safety items we've put forward. And mental health will play a critical role in that work. So I just really wanted to thank the new recruits for their service, for stepping up to serve. And I hope that everybody in this new class is able to really think about those numbers I mentioned earlier in council about the state leading the nation in our adverse childhood experience scores and those traumas. I just think we have to do our best to refocus our brains away from thinking about the way we've thought about crime previously, and rethink public safety moving forward. So that's all I have this morning. Thank you so much.
Ward three?
Good morning. I have just a couple of items. The first one, Director Chris Browning from the Utilities Department, I had asked him to come and give the citizens an update on the bulky trash pickups. As we all know, they have been slightly delayed, and I believe that Director Browning has some good news for us today.
Thank you, Councilmember Young. We're going to put a map up on the screen in just a second. There it is. This map shows the production of our bulk waste collection for the month of July. The green are those areas that have been completed. The blue are the areas that are currently under production. And the yellow is the area that is to be collected. This map shows just July. And the map is updated daily, and it can be found on OKC.gov so that folks can take a look at where we are in relation to collecting their bulk waste. Now, we expect to be completed with July this week, and the first week of August also this week. So by the weekend, we should be caught up. Next week, we'll be getting the schedule as planned for August. We have had a number of outside resources in Oklahoma City collecting bulk waste since April. In addition to our waste management folks and our city staff, we brought in outside resources. Right now, we have about 60 trucks running. So we've had a few challenges this year that caused us to be somewhat behind schedule. First of all, folks are still putting out limbs that were damaged during the ice storm in October. Secondly, we had a lot of vegetation killed during the very, very cold weather in February. And so when you compare this year, April, May, June, and July, with a normal year, we've had over 15,000 additional stops where people have been piling up the debris. We're not seeing a lot of sofas and refrigerators. We're seeing a lot of limbs. And those limbs are not heavy, but they take up a lot of room. And so the trucks have to take a lot of trips to the landfill. So it takes a lot of time. So that has made us behind this month, the worst month, about three weeks, but as you can see, we've caught up. We expect to be caught up next week, and we expect to stay caught up. Don't know that we'll have a large number of limbs and debris next month, because it's still hot. People have kind of taken a break from putting things out. But then again, in October, we may see another big surge in materials put out for collection. The other challenge we've had is similar to every other industry in the nation, where we just can't get enough qualified folks to do this work. We have four crews down. Waste Management has a number of crews down. It takes a very specialized skill to operate those boom grapple trucks. So we can't just go hire somebody and put them on the truck. It takes a while to train them. The other thing that we're going to have a challenge with is, you know, when people continue to prune and replace vegetation later in the fall, that's hurricane season. So getting outside resources may be a challenge then as well. But I can assure you, we're doing everything we can to collect that bulk waste and to stay on schedule. And I know you all have received a lot of calls, but we are doing the best we can to get this stuff picked up as quickly as possible. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, again, thank you for the good news. We're all very happy to hear it. And we will go out and share with others from here, for sure.
Yeah, I would just tag on to that, too. As Chris said, we're having difficulty in virtually every department. We're having challenges with getting staff. Our HR department is overwhelmed right now with the number of vacancies that we have and trying to get all those filled. We're doing everything we can. But we're just all stepping back and taking a look at it to see what new we can do or what different we can do to try to get our staffing back in place. Because we're seeing some of these types of service issues like we haven't seen in a very long time with this staffing challenge. And so it's something we're all working on.
Well, we appreciate everything you guys are doing. So thank you very much for that. Thank you, Director.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Sure. The only other item that I had, and it kind of goes right along with the same thing, is that the Oklahoma City Police Department is hiring for 150 officers. Regardless of your position or beliefs with regards to the department, we hope that you'll come out and apply and make a difference in our community. That is how we get the change that we see or that we'd like to see in the world. And so please show up, sign up, get up, let's get to work. I would also like to thank Lieutenant Goodman and all of the command staff that made it possible for me to do a ride-along on Sunday. Got to go out on Lake Hefner with some of the lake officers in addition to that. So it was a very enlightening experience with regards to our infrastructure for our lake officers as well as our troops. So I just want to appreciate the department for making that possible, and it was a great experience. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Ward four? Ward six?
Yeah, I would just like to publicly, I guess, commend Metro Park Neighborhood Association for the work they did on a long-term project that they've been, that was sort of a dream at one point and became reality last week. They organized, along with the help of Neighborhood Alliance, of Central Oklahoma, organized fence building for the community. So they had noticed, you know, loose dogs, loose animals as a concern for the residents and concern for the animals potentially getting hurt. So they, rather than just, you know, knocking on animal welfare's door every other day, they decided, you know, what would be the solution? And that was to build fences. And they realized and came to learn that a lot of the residents that didn't have them, it was due to the fence had been damaged, and they didn't have the funds to repair it. That, you know, they were on a fixed income elderly, didn't have the, you know, couldn't physically do it, those sorts of things. So, and I believe with the help of some donations, they were able to, they were originally only going to do a portion of the applications they got, and they were able to get some more donations in and able to cover all the applications for the neighborhood of folks that requested them. They had a group of lots of very young people, teenagers from Texas, who came up and put the labor in to build the fences. And it was just a really great effort by the neighborhood. And I know our SNI department here at the city has helped them as well. And I think just a great example of residents seeing a need and working to support one another. And, you know, there's a lot of, been a couple of really great news stories. I know The Oklahman did one, I think Free Press, and then a number of the news stations did a story. And I think, you know, I know, I hear a lot of, and I think, you know, based on some conversations today, today, concerns about, oh, the people that live in certain neighborhoods and assumptions about what people with lower incomes, what their neighborhoods or their communities are like. And I think if you go watch or read those news stories, you'll see that it's really more than what you expect. It defies the stereotypes and the sort of negativity that a lot of these neighborhoods get when there is a concentration of poverty, that many of folks are either, again, elderly, on a fixed income, or they're working full-time jobs, and they're just jobs that don't pay very well, but they really care about their community and want to be part of solutions. And I think this project is such a great example of that. So I just want to say thank you to them, and thank you for having me be involved as little as I was able to do, but just support them however I could. So appreciate the work they're doing.
Thank you. Board eight.
Just one thing. Please, please, please get your vaccination. And if you haven't got your second, or it's applicable, go get your second vaccination. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just had a couple come in as we talked about our HR department being inundated with vacancies. I wanted to say thank you continuously to them for being able to follow up with the month of July on Saturdays at Pitts Park and just giving out job information. So I know with them being inundated and still being able to show up, that truly means a lot. And as we talk about vaccinations, I guess my question to you, Mr. City Manager, is do we have a number, as I know we understand how many of, the percentage of our city employees that have been vaccinated? Do we know by department how many have been vaccinated?
We do have that. I don't know exactly what that is. I think we're around 60% right now in total, but I don't know exactly what our numbers are in every department. I know a lot of our departments where we have field employees, that's some of the areas that we've seen, like in parks, public works, and utilities. I'd have to get the numbers for you. But one of the things I'll tell you that we're looking at doing right now is trying to do small pods onsite at certain locations where we know we've had challenges, just to make sure we make it as convenient as possible and do some additional messaging in those departments where we haven't had as many.
Okay, thank you. And I think as we look at some of those field positions, we may want to also additionally add fire and police because they are.
Oh, absolutely. No, no question. They're definitely top of mind.
For sure. So I think that would be relevant for us to continue to be the model that we want others to follow. So us being able to make sure that information is available and upfront for our community as well would be very appreciated. Thank you very much. I want to congratulate the Britton District for Britton District Day that they had this past Saturday, and it had to be the hottest Saturday of the year. Oh, my gosh, it was so hot. But it was really cool for them to be able to convene again. They weren't able to do it last year. And to see the new businesses that have been added, as we heard about a couple weeks ago, and be able to patron those businesses. So congratulations to them on a successful Britton District Day. I wanted to also commend Restore OKC for just the great work they've continued to do, and they have interns every summer. And one of the things that they did this past week was they brought in over 16 folks who are in fields that these interns want to be a part of, just so they can hear from the standpoint of whoever that member is of the community to understand what it looks like to be in that particular career. So there were folks from the Oklahoman, the photographer Doug, who was there, and some young people wanted to be photographers or photojournalists. And also, we had some elected officials. We had nurses. We had all kinds of different things and careers, and even veterinarians that were there that young people are engaged in these fields. So I just want to take time to say thank you to Restore OKC for being intentional about the things that they're doing with our young people in the community. Eastside Vintage Market is going to be this Saturday, so if you can, come out, support. We're going to have some wonderful items gently used, and the proceeds for all of the spaces that people will hold will go towards the Willa D. Johnson Endowment Fund. So we are excited about raising money for this endowment fund because we want this particular center to open up with no barriers for our young people. So it's going to take small efforts like this for us to continue to make that grow and get to the number we need as far as the pay for the $30,000 that we're working to raise in final. And I just wanted to also, last thing, we had a celebration for Mr. Jernigan. He was the band director at Northeast High School for many years. And I bring his name up because I was in band for 2.5 seconds as a flag. I didn't last long at all. But his commitment to Northeast, and at the time I went to Northeast, classing music was a part of Northeast Band. So we've had this relationship for many, many years. So the way it happened, this go-around, was very disturbing. But either way, Mr. Jernigan has molded and changed the lives of a lot of young people that have been a part of his band. And the reason I bring his name up is next Friday, the 13th, at the corner of Northeast 30th and Kelly, from the mile of 23rd to 36th, there will be toppers on all of those streets that will commemorate Alvin Jernigan Avenue. So we are excited to see that coming up for Mr. Jernigan and just commend him for the things that he's done and for him to get his flowers and smell them while he's still here. So I wanted to bring that story up because I know we've seen other toppers, and I know Councilperson Cooper and I were talking about toppers in another part of our wards that we share together, and we were like, who is that? We didn't know. So we looked them up. But now we have someone who is here that we can speak about, so I just wanted to make mention of that. Now, we do have our next item, and that is item 13, which is Citizens to Be Heard. And I believe we do have one citizen that has signed up to speak, and if he will, please give your name and address, and we'll ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Your Honor. While that's coming along, I'm going to tell you an old French riddle for schoolchildren. So there's a town around a pond, and the pond supports the community, has a lot of living things in it, they make a lot of money off the pond. The chief botanist of the town runs into the town council meeting and says, you need to know that there's a water lily in the pond that is doubling in size every day, and that 30 days from now, that water lily will cover the entire pond. And the mayor, or the vice mayor, says, oh, go away, crazy old man. We'll do something about it when it covers up half the pond. What day is that? Ponder that riddle while you read the letter and I ramble. So the letter that I just passed out is a letter that I sent to the CDC three weeks ago on July 11th. It was a letter to Dr. Baylick. She's the head of the Division of Viral Diseases. She is the government, federal government official responsible for mask guidance. And I told her that I was disappointed that the CDC had not yet revised the mask guidance and that it would be very difficult for me to convince you all that we need to take decisive action and implement a mask mandate while the CDC was behind. I was not pleased about it because I'd rather be, you know, yelling at you all instead of them. But, you know, they changed the guidance about a week ago. I'm sure you read about that in the paper. Now, did that happen because of the strength of my argument, because of, or they just wanted to make me go away? It's because science is real. Science is real. There's a scientific way to manage a pandemic and an unscientific way to manage it. We've been managing this unscientifically, and 7,000 Oklahomans have died. Now, you need to understand that epidemic diseases grow exponentially. It's like interest rate. So I know I'm rambling, and I'm talking a long time, but I'm going to leave you with the word problem, okay? So, and I see a lot of attorneys here. I'm sure that one or two of you have a HP12C financial calculator tucked away in a desk somewhere. This is not a hard problem, I promise. If Mayor Holt deposits $11,387 in an interest-bearing account at the best bank in the world, this bank pays 52% interest compounded weekly on your deposits into this account. What's the balance of that account in three weeks? That's what I ask you. Now, you could figure that out on your financial calculator, and you wouldn't argue with me about the answer, but we had 11,387 cases of COVID in Oklahoma last week. If you add 52% to that number, that's the average weekly increase that we've seen in caseloads throughout Oklahoma statewide. When I sent that letter.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. I'll wrap it up, if that's all right. When I sent the letter, there were just under 3,000 cases a week. The following week, there were just under 5,000 cases. This week, there's 11,000 cases. It doubled in two weeks. We're about to 14 to 13 days of doubling time. The hospitals will be overrun. Our only, only chance is to implement a mask mandate. And the mayor, who can't even be bothered to sit here and listen, has the power to do it unilaterally. He can sign a piece of paper this afternoon to fix this problem, to do something. Because Louisiana passed a mask mandate yesterday, they went over their all-time caseload, highest caseload. They had 29,000 cases last week in Louisiana. That mask mandate, it's not going to make it stop growing immediately. It might not make it stop growing at all. It'll slow down the growth, but we don't know for sure. And in the meantime, those cases are going to pile on, and the doctors are already on television crying right now. So I ask each of you to make sure that the mayor hears this message because if we don't do, two weeks from now, we will be looking at 20,000 cases a week in Oklahoma. Our all-time high is about 29,000. We have to fix this. We have to work together. Anyone who opposes a mask mandate, find out why, because there are no scientists. Science, we solved this problem a long time ago, and we need you to listen so that more people don't die. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brook. We do have one item that we need to speak about in executive session, so we will recess. Okay, please come forward, and you have three minutes. And please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Lou Brook. I live at 2257 Northwest 36th Street, and I'm here to ask you to help save our kids' lives. Masks, they won't solve everything, but we need to do everything we can to crush this curve right now. Masks will lessen the burden on our healthcare workers, on our health system. Masks will reduce the number of infections. Reducing the number of infections reduces the number of dead people, okay? Why haven't you guys mandated masks yet? Why aren't you encouraging everyone to wear masks by your example right now? Councilmember Bradley Carter, Barbara Young, Todd Stone, Greenwell, who's not here. Stone cipher, why aren't you wearing a mask right now? People look up to you. They follow your example, and there are people that will die because they're not wearing a mask because they saw you weren't wearing a mask. The COVID Delta variant is coming for our children. We know how to spare some of them. We need our kids to wear masks. We need our adults to wear masks, whether or not they're vaccinated. We can't get vaccinated fast enough to crush this curve, to keep our hospitals from being overrun. We can't do it. It's too late. We didn't do it fast enough. And full is full. It doesn't matter why the hospital is full. It doesn't matter. It's full. And we know that wearing masks will reduce the number of people that are in our hospitals. We know that this works. I keep thinking about the old stories. I keep thinking about Pharaoh. I think about Pharaoh all the time and how Moses told him that his son would die if he didn't do anything, and he let the plague come, and Pharaoh's son died. Benjamin Franklin's son, when he didn't get the smallpox vaccine for his kid, his four-year-old fucking died, excuse me. Is that really what it's going to take for you guys to care? Does it have to be your kid? Does it have to be the mayor's kid? Is that what we need? Do we need your dead children, or are Louisiana's dead children good enough? Because Louisiana is a month behind us, ahead of us. We're a month behind them. So what they're seeing, it's coming here. It's coming for us. And ask them, do they wish they'd passed a mask mandate sooner? I know they do. Please do everything you can. Encourage vaccination, yes. Wear your masks in public. Tell people to wear masks. And yes, emergency proclaim that we have masks. I'm just so frustrated because when I look at the cases, what I see are dead Oklahoma children. Every time I see the cases rising, that's what I see, and you guys have the power to do something about it, and you're not doing anything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, we'll enter into executive session for item 11T, and we will recess until we convene. And we will recess until we convene. And we will recess until we convene. Well, it looks like we do have enough for quorum. So we have had discussion and we are adjourned. Thank you.